Chapter five, Bruce kind of did the lead on. So I'd say if Bruce isn't here, let's go, um, let's jump around at my little list of what we're going to discuss.
Okay.
Bruce coming, Tom?
Yes, it's gonna be like...
Let's go actually next to the cluster housing question.
Okay.
What, where are you at, chapter what?
Well, I'm skipping over five and six for right now and going to, Bruce is gonna do five. I don't know if he wants to also do six or not. I know he's worked on five. So I think it would be appropriate for him to do that if he's coming. So I think we could clean up the rest, three and seven, until he gets here.
Okay.
So the question on, on cluster housing is, there's the conservation subdivision provisions, 2108070.
What?
And I guess asking, I meant, gonna ask you, Tom, is that intended to
Email?
Replace cluster hous-
Why does it print the email?
Oh, what do you mean?
I need, I need this. What is that, Terry?
Cluster housing.
You want a cluster housing thing?
There it is.
I got your email from today and printed it.
I didn't, was that, was that just, was that a new one?
It was a bit.
Sorry.
Bruce being difficult tonight?
Look, she skipped over everything. That kind of threw me off. It's simple.
So going down to chapter three issues, the thought was to put cluster housing as a conditional use in chapter three, using the standards kind of in the current cluster housing code, the code provisions on cluster housing. Then the question kind of arises, but you have in chapter eight, a conservation subdivision provisions in 2108070. Were those intended to replace cluster housing? Do we still need cluster housing if people want it? What's, what's the thought process? My little look at it is that the conservation subdivision isn't quite the same as cluster housing. There's some differences. There are a little more restriction on like lot coverage versus cluster housing. So maybe you could give some background on what happened to cluster housing so we could decide what we wanna, what they could decide what they want to do with it.
Well, cluster housing went away and conservation subdivisions replaced it. And I will have to provide you with a follow-up email as to the process behind that. It's not that there wasn't a process behind it, it's simply that that was one area of the rewrite where I was not involved. So I myself personally don't have the answer to that question, but my understanding is that yes, it was deliberate replacement.
Well, if I can speak to it for a minute. Most of you have had an opportunity to look at the housing report that was done by Karen Iverson and the McDowell Group, which specifically says that there is a lack of housing and land available for, for a cluster house, for compact housing. And to replace the opportunity for cluster housing with the conservation easement, which is more restrictive, I think does not follow in the needs that have been identified by the most current housing reports. So it was at my recommendation that we put the cluster housing back into Title 21 and I support it wholeheartedly because I think it is an opportunity in all zones actually to be able to create more affordable housing and to create some design standards that are gonna be a positive impact on this community. So I'm in favor of putting the cluster housing ordinance back.
Is that the current ordinance?
The current ordinance.
And that's what is here.
I think there might have been one or two amendments as it related to the conditional use. I think because of the cluster housing concept, I think it belongs as a conditional use and because you can create, there shall be no more than one principal structure per lot. And the number of units that, you know, in R1 you can have five, which is a little bit more. In R3 you can have up to 20, R2M 19 per acre. So I think that it is a tool that should be used. It does require 30% open space. We've not changed that requirement.
How does cluster housing differentiate from site condos?
Well, cluster housing allows you to have fee simple lots as opposed to economy.
I can help you with that.
Yes.
A little bit.
Yeah.
A site condo, you could put multiple structures on one lot and before the ordinance, you were able to basically get a fill-in grade permit. And once you got a fill-in grade permit, you could basically do what you wanted to based on setbacks. So, I mean, nothing like that exists today. But a fee simple lot, you would go through the plating process, you would have to satisfy the community and the plating board and not just slip something through and do whatever you want. So there's a huge, a huge difference in the site condos as we know them are non-existent. I mean, as far as in the new concept.
Well, I mean, we wrote horses of Title 21 to protect against what you just described, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm a commercial guy, I apologize for my stupidity, but I'm just trying, if I drive down the street, would I notice a difference?
Yes.
Okay, and how would I notice that difference?
Well, you'd notice, you'd notice that difference in a number of ways. First of all, in the cluster housing concept, you have fee simple property.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas like what Ray said, in the site condos that we're also very concerned about that have been built, what you have are, you don't, you don't have the, I'm tired, I'm It's, it's hard for me to explain. I do cluster all the time. You have a 30% dedicated open space, number one. You have fee simple lots, okay? They can be attached, but they're fee simple.
Okay.
Okay. And Dan, can you help me out in, in the cluster? We're talking about the difference between the cluster and site condos.
On cluster housing, you have a, there's a purpose for it, you have wetlands, you have some sensitive area slopes or something. That does not prohibit you from developing lots as you normally would. So you're allowed to cluster the same number of houses, the same density in a smaller area and save those areas and reserve those areas outside of it. So, and in a site condo, of course, you're just taking, you're taking single-family duplexes and you're just taking the maximum density and putting them on more pieces of lot.
Are they, Connie, are they identified in a multi-phase development upfront?
Yes.
So phase one is normal houses.
No.
Four years later, three years later, they're doing phase three and they, and they see their market for cluster housing and everybody that bought phase one that didn't know that there's gonna be cluster housing? And developer decides to phase three of the project, wants to put them in? Or would that have to be identified at the beginning of the project?
Well, the cluster housing developments that I'm familiar with are all identified as such upfront in the beginning.
Is it a requirement?
Um, no.
I, I don't believe that it is. And I, I don't believe that there's anything that would keep you from taking a 10-phase project over a seven-year period of time and start to develop that, that if in fact the housing market changed and you wanted to change one of those tracts that was a phase into a cluster housing development, you could do that, but you'd have to go back to the planning and development to get that approved, so to go through a whole public process. I understand what your, your issue is about the first guys in thinking that it's all gonna be a single-family or it's gonna be a duplex development or whatever it is.
Right.
Then if future phase changes, is there anything to protect that? And I think the protection is the public process that you have to go back through if you want to take that phase and do it as a cluster development.
On the hillside, I did a house that was less than an acre and a quarter and it was under the cluster housing because there were wetlands around it. So they allowed them to develop some smaller lots while they dedicated the wetlands. So if you had 40 acres, you could still have, you know, 35 houses on it, but it might be in a smaller area, but the whole, the rest of the 40 acres in that whole area, there was no more than the total of 35 houses.
Yeah, it really, it's really, it's a different style of development. It can end up with potentially the same density theoretically, but it's gross density here versus gross density here. And it's just trying to develop so you don't have to take a core permit, disrupt the wetlands.
But wouldn't you know that prior to any of that? I mean, I mean, he would know that, any developer would know that.
In a, in a situation where you went out today and you went up on the South Anchorage hillside and you had steep areas and you had rock outcroppings and all those things, you'd certainly know that. It can also be done, and I guess I would want to rule it out, that, that the cluster could be used if there were significant costs associated with utility extensions. You want to make, you may, you know, it could have been the way that the San Lake gravel pit was redeveloped. You could have had very consolidated and compact utility extensions, cluster housing, leave a large area open, like 40 acres or whatever it is, and do it that way.
But that was all planned, I mean, that sucked in San Lake, I mean, when they went in for the original flat and all that, that, didn't they, wasn't that all done at, at that time? That wasn't just thought of that from phase one to phase whatever?
It was thought out that way, but the, the most recent phase got redone by the commission group. And the multi-variety type of housing, from single-family to three, four duplexes.
Uh, there are no threes and fours there anymore.
No, really.
They're all single-family and duplex, but predominantly duplex.
Oh, okay. I just, just wonder about the notification, you know, you know what you're getting into, first ones in, which is, seems to be, you know, a recent, you know, if they're naive and they don't understand the public process, I just heard about it after the fact and what now happened.
I think it's probably a different issue if it's a redevelopment of what you're grabbing, then you're not really trying to save wetland or certain bunch of trees or steep slope or whatever. If it's a 160 acres on hillside and you go into that now, your, your conservation or cluster approach is gonna be reflective of what you'd probably need to do anyway, because you really don't have a practical way to develop it. It's not gonna make any money anymore.
Would it be, would it be as a result of, of once they went in and tried to, to meet the code, that they realized that based on either change in code or, or constraints?
Could be passage in time and just the way that the financial system and the banks on that.
You know, and, and sort of like what other people have said, it, it has to do with the extension of the roads, water and sewer and the idea of clustering them together so that you don't have to go through expensive wetlands and have time delays to get a core permit. It doesn't increase density, but in answer to your question specifically, I, I can't think of an instance where, and in reality, the density for West Park, if you want to use West Park as an example, that, there was always R2A zoning in there. And so it was under, it was underdeveloped as far as the maximum allowable density is concerned. For someone using the cluster housing ordinance and looking at a potential for development, they're gonna look at the project as a whole and, and try to determine if they have outcroppings, steep slopes, wetlands, whatever it is that they have that is going to make conceptually the cluster housing concept more financially viable for them than trying to deal with extraordinary circumstances.
So you don't see any issue for any disclosure or, or anything like that in the phase development?
Well, I, I think in the cluster housing developments that I am aware of, the entire project is, is cluster housing and then developed in phases is, is what I, is what I have seen in the past. Yeah.
And often, under the homeowners association agreement, the stipulations of the overall project, that you basically set out the basic intent of what it's supposed to be based on this plan. And if you want, if you want to modify that, or someone comes in and buys a tract in the future, then they have to get a certain percentage buy-in from the existing residents or homeowners for the homeowners association before they can even go back and try and change their view.
And as long as, I'm okay as long as it's a public process.
Yep.
So there's not, there's not, you know, first ones in or
No.
Then it, then it'll be, you know, blindsided.
No. Are there any other questions?
Dan?
Oh, Dan.
Yes, on the cluster development here for the large lot, R6, R8, R9, R10, on the density per acre, you go 0.8, which brings you down to a 40,000 square foot lot, which is minimum for onsite only setting. But then you're going to yard setbacks of 25 and 20. You want to keep that, say, in the R6, which is double that, normally.
Uh, I think it should be consistent with what it is now. Yeah.
So rather than that, you may want to just put in there, commence it or consistent with the zone district.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I don't know, it's serious.
So keep the original setbacks then that currently are?
I mean, as, you could set then that there was some real reason to, say they put in a community swell, a community setback system, and they had a very small envelope
Yeah.
To build, you could go for variance
Yeah.
On the setbacks.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if I'm understanding right, the idea was that this represents the current code and the idea was just to put it in as the current code exists, not the provisionally adopted, just make it a conditional use with the current code. I mean, it'll have to be, ultimately it'll have to be modified slightly because it's written under the way the current code is versus, but I think the standards were gonna remain the same.
As the current code.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that some of the standards should be changed in light of the provision already adopted?
Well, if you're gonna allow a 25-foot front yard setback in our six zone, the community would probably fight that.
Okay, so...
Okay, I'd argue exactly the opposite way. They might want to fight, but if we're gonna go to a cluster development and it's gonna go through a public process to look at, and you're already talking about there's a benefit to going to the smaller lot and having more open space on that, to get the value out of a cluster development, to make the envelope of development smaller and better, I think it would be much better to have a planning commission look at it, but accommodate the lower level of setback.
And that, that might work, especially if you were staying in the middle of a 2038 tract. But if you're, if the wetlands to the rear and you're developing the front along the road and people are one side and you're, you're looking at one and a quarter, two and a half acre lots and they're setback 50 feet and they look across the street and here's, you know, twice as many dwelling units and they're sitting right on the street from their perspective, so they may, you know, that's going to create problems in the community of that.
I guess we'll take a look at that.
Just a clarification, is the intent to replace the conservation, provisionally adopted conservation subdivision?
No, no.
Or to supplement or?
It would just be
An additional tool?
And it would be put in chapter
Another tool in the toolbox is what we're trying to do.
It would be put as a conditional use in chapter three.
And is, would the commission be interested in any background information about the development of the conservation and why it replaced, or is that not a good use of staff?
I don't think that's a good use of staff, Con. Really, quite frankly, we're not doing away with the conservation subdivision, we are just also retaining the cluster housing. Unless someone else wants more background information.
I just don't know the purpose. I don't have the background as to why it was replaced. And I know there was public processes behind it, but if the commission was not interested, I would not look at the time at this point.
Okay. Bruce, just so you know, we skipped five and six and went right to cluster housing.
That's what it sounded like, yeah.
Yeah. So now we, well, actually, let's go next to seven, the additional snow storage issues in seven.
Yeah.
Because that way we'll have three and seven down before they're required.
Tom, real quick question, existing code today on snow storage, what's it say?
Is this a question to me?
Yes.
As I understand it, very little, I don't have my existing code, what the practice is, is I have been told by reviewers for water quality and by, and by reviewers for drainage, is that basically developments today, as I understand, at least the commercial developments, and perhaps multifamily as well, maybe some folks here know better than I, but basically the practice today is that a snup, the develop, the developer is required to tell the muni how they are going to manage snow storage or snow on the site and to, if the, they do not produce a document establishing that they will, they will remove the snow from the site, i.e. they won't have to store it onsite. They, if they don't produce that document that they are told to provide snow storage, the clincher is, as I understand it, and as I've been told, is that there, there isn't a ground rule for how much? And that's, 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 that's current code. Now, the current parking requirements are, are high enough so that they can usually fit it. What the, that's what I understand.
My understanding is we had to defy on a commercial piece where we're gonna put snow storage. How much or even beyond that, it doesn't get addressed. And that's the way it currently is.
It does, yeah. I mean, it's subject to someone's interpretation. Plan, review and approval.
They've got no basis to reject it, so we show it on drawing, we show a percentage. And unless it's conditional use, when they start saying no snow storage and required parking, that, that's where this thing starts breaking down.
But I, I've been involved where, where you submit a plan and the reviewer says, I don't think you have enough, and you say, how much? And so, well, it just doesn't seem like enough, why don't you tweak a little bit? And you're going back to, until finally you get someone to say, okay, I agree, I think that's enough. I mean, there's no real
Yeah, but you can put it in required parking.
Yeah.
You cannot put it in landscaping. You can't put it on sidewalks, but you can put it in required parking. And the thinking, the thinking has been that if, on a commercial operation, if the customers can't get there, he's gonna haul the snow away. And so it has seemed to work fairly cleanly, now, fairly, fairly well, to be honest. We just went through the record snowfall, there was a lot more complaints about the streets and roads than the parking.
Commercial.
Commercial site. And now, right down just
Are apartments commercial?
Well, apartments are commercial, but let's separate them for a minute, if we may. If we start defining that we have to allocate 10% of our parking area to snow storage, the parking areas get bigger. And that is, that's where the rub comes. And the, the city's position has been, well, you're either gonna sign an agreement to haul snow within 48 hours, which isn't practical and which is very expensive, or you set aside 10% of your parking, which gets the parking areas bigger, which is not in, not inconsistent, it's inconsistent with Anchorage 2020, they want some more compact, compact area, and we're making our parking lots 10% bigger year-round for a limited time. And so I think we should specifically allow snow storage in the required parking. I'm keeping it off the landscaping because of the, the impact of the landscaping when we pile snow, push snow. I'm keeping it out of handicap spaces just because I think we should, you know? You've gotta have handicap space if it's full of snow, I don't think you got a handicap space. But that, that's the question that I'm raising is, because I don't want, if we make the parking lots 10% bigger, it just really, that's a very, very major impact on the commercial development.
Well, let's hear some, from some other folks that are involved in the commercial development. Terry?
Well, I think I've got a couple of comments. I don't disagree with you, Jim. I think the big things that I see in commercial is if, Diamond Center's a prime example, they don't move snow, they move snow up until Christmas, after Christmas they stack because they know that their big season is Christmas and they don't want to lose a parking spot and they would have a fit if that happened. So that's where the market has really taken over. I personally own some fairly large parking lots, about 308,000 square feet of park lot. And, and in our facility, it's a converted, retail, it's been converted to office, so it doesn't have near the demand that it had when it was built. We were able to store everything on our lot this year, even from the high snow. We had to stack and keep it up. And it was on paved, was not on, on grassy land. It had storm drainage on the facility site, which I think is real important because it's not running in the street, it's not running off on somebody else's lot. However, the city, on the other hand, has a road that comes down and dumped all of its wastewater onto our property, into our sewer, which we've handled that, the road was rebuilt and it, they didn't realize that was gonna happen. But, but those are the kind of things that I think are real important, that we use a practical approach to snow removal. And once again, it's very expensive to move the snow off our lot, five-inch snow costs about 20 grand to move off our lot. And find a place to put it, that's the difficult portion.
I don't, I'm not saying we're changing the drainage at all. I mean, I, I'm leaving that because that makes some sense to me. It's just, where, where can it sit is what I'm trying to address with this thing. I just want to make sure I'm clear and I want to make sure I don't have any unintended consequences of what I'm doing. I mean, we've heard your example with Diamond Center, Sears tells us the same thing, you know, up till Christmas we haul, after Christmas we, and it's, it doesn't appear to be a problem.
The biggest issue I see from, from a commercial standpoint is the meltdown because it is ugly for about a month and a half, but it's gonna be ugly if you move it. You know, it's not gonna change the ugliness of it. And we, we address it by trying to pick the trash up as it, as it happens because you want to keep your property. I mean, I know Diamond Center does it, I know that the folks at, at University Center do it and, and the Sears Mall. So I think you really leave it up to the commercial operator, they certainly don't want their property to look horrible and, and they'll deal with it, I think, you know? Maybe there's an issue in smaller commercial areas, in our, in our smaller buildings, we haul because we have a demand for parking that requires to haul, haul after every snow removal. But that's, that's a dynamic of the building. If people don't have a place to park, they complain. And if they complain, they move somewhere else. So I think it's a dynamic of the, of the market, in my opinion. And I'm, and I'm concerned a little bit about commercial property having drainage, proper drainage onsite. I think that's important. If you're gonna, if you're gonna develop a piece of property and it's gonna have snow storage on it, there ought to be a way to handle that snow without putting it in the public street.
Terry, the law Terry, the law in the last five years has changed. Five years ago, we didn't have to treat it. We could discharge it off-site.
Right.
And today, we got to treat it.
Right.
And that's the law.
And I think that's the real key, is to handle it, to make sure that it's handled on-site and moved off, you know, and not parked across somebody else's property or across a public right-of-way. And that's what I think we need to do with snow removal. But I think the demand that it be, you know, four inches of snow, you have to remove it. You know, if it heats up the next day, what are you going to do? You're going to lay April snow? You're going to haul snow in April and it's going to be, you know, 60 degrees three weeks from now? You know, it just doesn't make any sense. You're going to drive rental rates way up if you do that. Way up.
Dana, do you have any comment?
Well, I think a couple of comments. You know, 20 years ago, I used to move snow. And my first comment is, is that typically, there's no way you can remove, even if you sign a piece of paper saying you move it 48 hours, after a big snow event, there's no way. The reality is, you're basically still trying to clean up the lot for people to walk on safely and to sand and to dry without getting stuck. And typically, then you're coming back and redoing the entrances where the municipality or the state comes by and blows a berm in. Because they finally got there three or four days later and they're doing their cleanup. And so, I guess, you know, I have that kind of resume of, if we're held to a different, commercials held to a different standard than the public entities. You know, you can do what you can do. It's theoretically, I guess, but 48 hours typically, no. Maybe a week, you can haul off. And so, to me, it sets itself up for failure to begin with. I agree with Terry on the drainage. I mean, it's unfortunate we just had a hell of a snow year. But if, you know, all the sins came out, I should say, you know, people that don't have the proper drainage or thought they did and found out something different. I don't, I think supply, I think demand in commercial will actually sort itself out as far as storage on-site or hauling it up. But I'm worried more about apartment complexes, multifamily residential. You know, you have to get a good landlord, good associations, and the associations don't quite see it that way and what happens there. And I don't know if there's a solution to that. Quite frankly, on the commercial side, it's business and if you're going to run a good business and you're going to not only have a decent looking building, you're going to have places for people to park to do your business in. A piece of paper will not make you haul the snow away. Your business won't make you keep your business rolling. But on the other side, not residential, I call it the middle ground, the apartments, larger residential complexes, associations and things like that where, you know, I live in the homeowners association, they're responsible for their own snow removal. It was a mess this way. And, you know, from the standpoint was, they'd come through with, you know, small pickups and I called on a number of occasions, emergency vehicles. There's no way they could have gotten there for weeks at a time. A fire or ambulances or anything like that on the hillside. So that's what I worry about as far as the snow removal and how to handle that. And I don't know if there's a one box that catches everything on it because it's, you know, it's diversity.
Well, I can speak to the residential portion of it and I think if it's a multifamily rental project, that landlord is going to be just like the commercial guy and he's going to make sure that his tenants, you know, have a place to park. Because that's part of what he's selling when he rents a place, whether it's, you know, a defined parking space, a, you know, carport parking space, or whatever it is. The problem, I think, in, that you're talking about in single-family development falls squarely on the shoulders of the homeowners association and the project manager, the property manager for that association, who takes their instructions from the board and don't want to hire a competent snow remover, removal company that will take the lowest bid with the guy with the pickup trucks. And so, that's a dilemma. The developer can require, you know, as part of his subdivision agreement, if you're doing a condominium development, that, you know, the property manager or that the homeowners association remove the snow. But after that, he's done and it's up to the board of the homeowners association and the property manager to make sure that that happens, unfortunately.
Can I just focus on, there's four kind of proposed amendments on the landscaping section. We had already talked a little bit about, I'm sorry, the snow storage. We've talked about and made some other changes, but these are new ones. And I want to see if anyone has anything they want to say specifically to these.
Say that again, shall I inter?
Well, in the memo, there's four new proposed amendments to the snow storage section. They would be on page, they start on page 306. And the first one is kind of a clarification of the intent. The second one is to exempt a triplex from the applicability of the section. The third one is to clarify that a redevelopment or remodeling doesn't constitute a new development. And the fourth one, I think, is kind of addressing what Jim talked about before, which is changing the required percentage of surface area that has to be set aside for snow storage from 10% to 5%.
See, that's a misnomer. Because currently today, there is no percentage set aside.
Right.
And so, and
Well, it's from the 10 that's in here.
Okay. I think it's
And it's for new developments.
I think it should go to zero. Economic analysis hasn't provided for any snow storage set aside. And so, and it would really, that would make, right away, the lots would have to be 5% bigger.
Yeah. You've got to go somewhere for a little bit.
You can't put it in fire lanes.
No.
Already. I mean, that's
Standicat.
Yeah, you know, on that.
This, the percentage is primarily to attach a clear ground rule for all parties that we, we proposed originally 20% based on research of what actual, actual demand was. It was changed to 10% through successive reviews, through compromise. And then I think at one point, commercial was at 5%, residential at 10%. But the whole idea was to try to provide a ground rule. It's very conservative relative to the actual need, the sort of the natural given need for snow storage, which is really more between 10% and 20%. And to provide that for all parties so there's clarity. And if someone is going to haul only until, you know, December 25th or what have you and store afterwards, they have a plan, this allows for that and it drops to zero.
No, no, you don't.
And I just wanted to clarify that. I believe that 48-hour thing is current code, as I recall. As I, I don't, I don't think we carry that forward as a community when we worked on snow storage. I think that's actually gone. It's a little more flexible now. I think.
Thank you. What it currently says, if you have an agreement to haul, which is, I would say, an agreement to haul within 48 hours, it doesn't say before December 26th and after December 26th, you don't have to.
It's deliberately
Is that 48 hours? Is that, is that how the point is?
I don't think it is. I can't.
In the current code?
I don't think it is. Not. But it may be in practice. A lot of this subject, Dana, is a lot more is in practice than
You can't, if you go get
City Hall.
You can't move it.
City Hall couldn't, their parking lot within 48 hours this past winter.
I just want to be clear that this, the snow storage in the rewrite does not refer to 84 hours and deliberately does not require
I've got a scenario that I did. When I built my place, I actually went, I cut in 10 feet behind the right-of-way, you know, the right-of-way, the road right-of-way, or back in for my own personal snow storage. And I was thinking ahead, trying to, you know, the hillside. But what I found out was that everybody pushes their snow into the street from the driveway and then, and then the snow removal contractor and or downtown my place, the city, then they plow the snow that was on the street that all my neighbors put into my snow storage site. And it's a losing proposition. There is no way. I mean, I can't block it off. I mean,
It sounds like a personal problem.
Well, but when I'm getting it, you designate 10% or 5%. Those people that are compliant in the new stuff may find, the way they do it, they may find other people's snow in there unintentionally, without thinking about it. Because once it hits the public street and maintenance has to do something with it, they typically put it somewhere.
By Title 21, you can't haul snow across the lot without becoming a snow dump. And so, my concern is the economic analysis does not reasonably approach this because it ignores the cost of hauling snow. This, if we make everything 5% bigger, this is a very, very, very significant impact. And what we're currently doing seems to be working.
What is it that we currently do?
We store it on-site until it impacts the commercial operation and then they haul it away.
Where would you store it on-site?
I just want to point a correction. The current model, it deliberately addresses snow storage and it gives the user the ability, just like the app has the ability to select how they're going to manage snow.
Yeah, but it does never assign a cost to it. Tom, come on. It says in here, well, they're going to haul snow away, so we're not going to include any cost. That's what kills me with this thing. You take the MGM building. If you assign, if you said, okay, they're going to make it 5% bigger, it throws everything out. You say, oh, no, they're going to haul snow. You just heard the gentleman next to you say, four inches costing $20,000. And so, because they're going to haul snow, it's no cost and so it never shows up in the economic analysis.
Does the rewrite create the need to haul snow? Or didn't it
If it does, it starts 5%. That's where it comes in.
From an economic standpoint, 20 years ago, you could get an end-dumping truck for 35, 40 bucks an hour and a loader for about 60. And a snow dump fee is five bucks a load. Today, the loader's 150 an hour, the truck's 125 an hour, and the dump fee's 20, 25 bucks a load. And that's because in the last 20 years, the municipality's taken away private snowdumps. You know, there's a lot more things you have to do, regulation, you know, you have to treat the water with it, you know, and whatnot. They grandfathered in a bunch of regional, but the municipality grows through on the private side and of course, the city itself ran into that problem this year with their own snow dump issues because of so much snow. So this is a, this is a unique event. But the cost has been, in 20 years, has quadrupled in snow removal. And you can attest to that, Terry, because you and I both pay for it every year. And so, I think if you regulate and you, you know, if you have regulations to do something, we have to understand what it costs and we have to make sure there's a place for the people to go. We agree that people agree, the assembly agrees that it's a reasonable cost at this to move the snow, that it is. But if you make them move it or you make them do something, then, you know, you need to understand what it really costs. It's, $5 a gallon for diesel fuel, it's a big deal now.
Didn't we run out of places to put snow?
We did.
We put several months before the end. Would not be
But this was a unique year theoretically.
Yeah. You know, I'm not expert in this area, obviously, so I'm trying to figure this thing out. It would seem that in a development that you ought to set aside some area for snow storage because based upon what your staff is saying is that typically, that's what's been done? That certain area of the site's been set aside for snow storage?
If they don't haul, they don't manage it in some other way, they must. And they must, not because the muni's requiring it to, it's, they need to.
So my understanding what 4A says right now is that in area of the site, well, it says now 10%, we're considering 5%, but then it's preceded by the statement except where there is an alternative snow management strategy, such as snow removal. So what you're basically saying is that where you have the opportunity to, you don't have to do the 5% if you pick another strategy, which is to haul it away, right? That's what this says.
Correct. And it's really putting into code, into clear ground rules, the practice of today. It will continue to be regulated. He will continue to be asked, what are you doing with that snow and where are you putting it? This is an attempt to clarify that. And secondly, this is, this is the site, MGM building. They, they would get anywhere from 12 to 16 fewer parking spaces required in their development under the rewrite. The significance of that for snow stores is that today, things kind of work out easier because, for snow stores, because there's really a lot of excess parking out there. With, under the rewrite, we, we, we all want to only require the parking that's necessary. And the snow storage, if it's this choice of the property owner, and it may be the economical choice to store it in as part of the parking lot, that because we've cut it a little more to the quick, it could impact parking easier. So what we're trying to do is provide a specific number that an investor can say, okay, this is what they're going to require.
The issue is, do we set it, do we make every parking lot bigger? And I don't think we need to make every parking lot bigger. And that's what, right now, we're sharing snow storage and required parking. It can occur in a common area. And that's the practice today. And something, in my opinion, around one-third of the use is the parking lots have less required parking. Not in every instance. Some instances, there is less required parking in this Title 21 over the other one. But currently, we can share this snow storage.
Right.
And if it gets to be a problem, it gets hauled. If it doesn't get to be a problem
I see what you're saying. Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, now I understand. What you're saying is that the existing situation is that they store the snow on-site in the parking area where it's profitable to do that, okay? And when it's not profitable to do that, they haul it away.
That's exactly
And what you're also saying is that if it's a business or a well-run residential multifamily structure, they're going to haul it away because that's the nature of business.
Right. But I don't think
What it may break down is that situation where you have a common ownership situation. Yeah.
Well, we are asked now in subdivision development, when we go to look at a plan, you know, where are you going to put your storage? We're asked that in the development of condominiums on a single-track. We're asked that as far as subdivisions are concerned. If I were building a 50-lot, a 50-lot subdivision and, you know, and I can't put my snow storage in the right-of-way, I have to designate a place for it, 5% or 10%, I could theoretically lose that, that number of units or that number of lots. So I think that, you know, the management of it, I guess I would have to agree that it needs to be, it needs to be market-driven, whether it's commercial or whether it's, or whether it's something else.
But at the same time, I think that we have to recognize that there is a problem here. And we have to assure that there's some type of solution that the developer provides to resolve that problem. And so, it would have to say something along the lines that adequate snow storage should be provided on-site and may include either the parking area or if not the parking area, it would have to be hauled away. I'm not, I'm just making up words right now. I think you have to say something, though.
Some clarity to it.
Some clarity, yeah. I mean, you just can't leave it out there. Well, you can, but I don't think it's a good idea.
That's the reason why I said it could occur in required parking.
Yeah. No, I understand what you're, the point you're trying to make.
That's how it was. Because this did not clarify it. And it gets to be a, because it lacks clarity, I support staff in that it should be clear so we can all read it one time and understand it. So that's what I was attempting to do.
Hey, Tom. Can I ask a question? You know, as I read this, it, it talks about the uses that are exempt and then, so if I have a, I've been using Connie's example, if I have a multifamily use that's a condo developer, so it's not one of those, but it really, you know, sort of mimics single family or two-family sort of design, you know, even though they're not individually platted lots, but they're, you know, they sort of look like that. There'd have to be that extra five percent provided in that type of development, right?
Yes.
Right. You would take the, the vehicle surface areas to be plowed on the development, on the lot as a whole and, and that, that snow management requirement would apply to that area.
And I think, I don't know, this, this might be one of those examples where we, and I, as long as I've read, I always get confused in terms of use versus building style and how that gets interpreted in the code, you know? But if it, if it's a multifamily use, but really sort of mimics more of a two-family style development and for all intents and purposes could be platted lots with duplexes on it, but it just happens to be a condo, it doesn't seem like there should be a different set of rules for that, that style of development. And so, I think in that case, I, I would, I would argue, if I were going in for residential development, that the, that the way that it currently is stated, that you go in and sort of make your case, I guess, is, is a, is a more flexible, you know, situation given that that might be more appropriate. I, I, I hear what you're saying from a residential standpoint. It's a big cost for our developments that we do plowing snow. And if we can store that snow onsite, we absolutely will. But given the cost of land and frankly, you know, they're dynamic, those numbers change all the time, right? I mean, as fuel goes up, we might find that it might be worth putting more snow storage onsite permanently. The reality is we had a minimum, minimum look for temporary snow storage areas. Temporary could be twenty-four hours, it might be forty-eight hours, it might be three weeks, but we usually know we're gonna be hauling it at some point. I think that it needs to be in the code somewhere because I've worked with plenty of designers that you get down to the end and you say, hey, where the heck is my snow storage? It's like the, the snow, the garbage and, and the mail, they forget. So I'm, I'm all for, you know, kind of being upfront and putting it in and say, hey, this is gonna be an expectation of responsible development. But in the example I just gave, it seems like, it, it seems like it's missing the mark a little bit because it's, again, it's that, the way that that multifamily use, it might be defined even though it's, it's not really a multifamily building, it just happens to be a different ownership structure and so you got a different set of rules.
And you guys may know better than I do, but how would, how would a platted neighborhood with single family, two-family, with its streets, how would that be provided for under the current regulations? Does something get lost, you know, in the, between the cracks in a, in a site condo?
Right, and now there's even hybrids, right? Where you plat, plus you have a condo. I mean, you know, so there's, it's not strictly plat in the single family anymore or you have a condo. It's really somewhere, you know, it's, it's all in between.
I just want to be clear that this, this, this probably isn't written for anyone in this room or even the ninety percent. Or the ninety-nine percent of the development community. But it's, 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 it's designed to provide a very conservative baseline requirement for those who, who may not think about it or be inclined to store it in a, in a place or way that might impact public living.
We, we all live in a city where we have a lot of snow and there've been various ways that we've all learned how to sort of deal with it. And I hate to think that one percent or one formula fits every situation. I mean, that's, that's the problem that we're, that we're dealing with. So I'm sort of in favor of fighting and arguing, fighting, arguing, discussing each individual situation and making your case as far as snow storage is concerned.
I think that, although I would agree with that, I think there has to be a statement in the code that specifies that for new development, that there needs to be adequate snow storage provided on the site or an alternative method provided. So if you take away the percentage requirement, you still have the responsibility of providing an adequate way of dealing with the snow removal or snow storage. You have to evidence that as part of your development plan, but it's not a strict percentage.
Right, we do that now.
Yes.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Do that now.
You can do that now, but you'd have to write it that way. And like, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that I think you do need to have something in code that, you know, allows the reviewer to say, no, snow storage is required.
Maybe we could say up to a maximum of X percent. And then somebody could argue for a lesser.
Yeah.
If they had a.
But the problem with that is that you'll always be arguing about that percentage. I think a better approach is to get, make the, the words, to have the municipality authority to require the developer to have adequate snow storage and the developer have the flexibility to make the case as to how he is going to provide that snow storage or snow removal as part of the development plan itself.
And I think it says that, just tweet A. I think four, the body four and then the, the other subparagaths say what we want to say. It's just the percentage is the hangup and Hazel is the one that has the percentage.
I don't, I don't have any problem identifying where we're gonna put snow. I think that is proper. So I don't have a, a problem with the ten percent saying, we're gonna say ten percent gets us close and where, we want to know where that's gonna be. And you keep on reading and it says it, it's gotta have drainage, appropriate drainage and other stuff in there, so everything's protected. The real question is, is can that ten percent properly apply in required parking? And that's what I'm attempting, I attempted to answer the question, not arguing the ten percent because we're gonna.
Use existing parking.
Use existing parking. That's where.
What you're basically saying is that, and add to this sentence, something along the lines of, and required parking may be utilized for that purpose.
That's exactly what I said.
For the word.
We are arguing.
What happens today.
Lose the ten percent. Use the ten percent as your, as your, as your thumbnail and say you can use ten percent of your park.
Right.
And if you can't afford that in your develops, you're gonna remove it.
Right. But I, I think that you also have to have a criteria that there has to be an adequate provision for snow removal or snow storage on the site. That has to be part of the public policy.
I don't have a problem with the ten percent. I mean, I, I being, it's a reasonable place to start. And I tell you, up on the hillside, ten percent may not be enough. In the midtown, maybe it's too much.
Well, then, I think maybe then it's up to ten percent and then follow that by another sentence that says, and required parking may be utilized or a portion of that percentage.
I don't have an objection.
All right, okay.
I'm sorry.
Did we already address that?
I didn't know if we did, but I've gotten lost before. But Connie was kind enough to give me fifteen minutes, I'm using twenty-five, and she sent me a bill so.
Right, and we're moving on. I think we've had enough discussion about snow storage. I think it is, we need to know where we are going. And you can compare to whatever it is that we have already had a discussion.
I think we already agreed.
Because this is our second or third discussion on snow storage. So, moving on. Okay, Sally, you're next.
Okay. The next thing to discuss is, we talked about changing in chapter seven, the landscaping, and the consensus was to go with the landscape architects' materials, get rid of the landscape units. Since then, the landscape architects presented a table that I sent to everybody and it's a way to provide alternative equivalent compliance in the landscaping area. And since not everyone had seen this, I want, you haven't seen it? It's, it was in your email. I sent it to you in my email today with like seven exhibits. There's more over here on the table too.
Hey, Connie. Connie, do you want to introduce Tyler to everyone?
Yes, I do.
We were in the middle of a discussion when he came in. So I know it's my.
Right, right. I'd like to introduce Tyler Robinson, who is our newest commissioner. To your left is Jim Ferguson.
Welcome aboard, good luck.
And Stacy Dean and Bruce Phelps, Ray Hickel, Dana Cruz and Terry Parks, and of course, you know, Tom Davis. Tyler is a former supervisor.
You say it, planner.
Planner. It's hard for me to get that out. A former planner.
Former, okay. It was hope, he said former.
Former supervisor, long range finding department here at the municipality of Anchorage. He currently is the vice president.
I got a promotion just now.
All right.
No, no, from you. Development Finance Manager.
Development Finance Manager for Cookinlet Housing. So he's worked on both sides of the aisle. So welcome very much.
With the dark side.
Dark side, yeah. Dennis with the dark side.
The dark side, yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes. And this is Sally Kuzco, so I think you've met. Yes, all right.
So really, there's two kind of issues. I mean, one is, do we want to provide alternative equivalent compliance and allow those procedures with respect to landscaping? And then assuming we do, is everyone okay with this chart? I didn't prepare it, it was prepared by a landscape architect.
So, did this come from a group of landscape architects? Okay.
It did.
You know some names that were involved in, involved in this?
Terry Shonfeld and Dwayne Adams.
Dwayne was the guy from Chugatch that wanted to speak the other night at the Connie Conference meeting.
Yeah, he's with USKH, actually, yeah. Dwayne Adams, he's to be, and as I know.
Yeah, and he wanted to speak?
Last night, or Monday night, yeah.
He was representing Chugatch.
Oh, well, and he can speak, he just, we're, we're, we are not there. We're not there.
It was big.
Unlike Mr. Potter who can't speak, you know, all the time.
Yeah, he tells me not to speak.
Right.
They should put parentheses, which, which, which the moose don't eat.
Yeah, really.
You know?
Yeah.
Call moose food.
Moose is right.
Moose don't like this and maybe.
So is this meant to be an alternative?
Yes.
They can use it if they wish to, is that my understanding?
Yes. What, the way it arose was, they have, they felt that the landscape unit provisions were way too complex and didn't, kind of weren't really reality. You talk about trees and shrubs, not a half of a unit. So they revised the section, but in that section, there was a table that looked like this that gave units. And they said, well, what if we use that table to create alternatives? So if you are, were required to have so many trees and you could keep an existing tree and it was a landmark tree, then you'd get, this could be used in its place. So there'd be some alternative equivalent compliance procedures. So they kind of used this chart, which was already in there, but modified it to deal with trees and shrubs and not units.
Well, I'll tell you my opinion, I like it.
I'm not sure how to read it. So newly installed, so for landmark tree, so four new trees equals six existing trees, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's how you read it, right? Then I can, then I do understand. It makes a lot more sense than, than this would mean.
Well, it's also something where they can choose to follow this as opposed to must follow this, right?
Right.
And this is something that they have developed that they feel comfortable with, the people working in the field. And so, I vote for accepting it.
I think it's a good, it's a good plan.
Yeah.
I, I typically tear trees out, I'm not much to put them in, so you guys won't have to hurt you.
Use deep Florida removals.
Well, you know, I guess I, I would, I would say two things about landscaping. First of all, when you're doing contact development and infill development, it is virtually impossible to retain mature vegetation. So you are going to, and I think of trailer parks, for example, as, as a good example of that. Because we're all, we all talk about trailer parks and how that is such a great development opportunity. But the problem with trailer parks is they have all these shallow utilities running every which way. And in order to really redevelop a trailer park, you have to go in and you have to take out all of that stuff that's, that's underneath the ground. And in doing that, you're gonna get rid of almost every, all of mature vegetation. So you have to have a formula for putting it back. And I think this is a reasonable formula for reestablishing some landscaping, which I think is one of the most important things that we can do to make this city more attractive, whether it's commercial or whether it's, it's residential. I can tell you from my own marketing experience in pricing residential property, if I have a home that has nice landscaping and that is mature landscaping, it is, it's gonna get a better value than a home of equal age where they never planted a single solitary tree. I don't care too much about shrubs, quite frankly, because shrubs get trampled on by moose or children or they die easily because of the amount of snow. But trees are a real valuable asset when it comes to residential property. And I, you know, you've all heard me say, there's two examples of town, in town, you know, that is what residential mortgage did with their landscaping. And they maintain it, they trim it, they fertilize it, they, they water it. And then you've got Walmart, you know, which is a real, a real disappointment. So it's not necessarily the diameter of the tree or the quality of the tree or whether it came from Idaho or the valley or, you know, British Columbia. It's what you do with that tree. It's how you plant it and how you take care of it that's important. And it, it makes a big difference in terms of value.
So Connie, how do you do the, the Alpine area developments? Where, where, you know, like I, where I live is a transition area. If anything can actually live up there with the wind, you know, it's gotta be pretty robust.
Right.
But typically, they don't.
Right.
And when we did our, when we did our house, we made, we literally had to put the trees up so the wind would blow the, so the house either protected it.
Right.
You know, the downwind of it, or the tree would blow into the house to hold it up. Because it just, you, you've seen it.
Yeah.
You know, I've seen what they, I mean, as far as going around it, the only thing that would stay up are shrubs or hedges. As, as far as, as far as whatnot. So I think there's a difference between, you know, at the seven hundred and fifty foot mean sea level area where I'm at versus where Walmart is or Tocquehaun's or, or, or those developments. And so, does this, does that solve any of that?
I don't think it addresses it. It doesn't. It, all this does is gives them a, an alternative to. And so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Be a model.
It was a, it was a challenge for us to try to do it, try to figure it out.
The.
And I think more developments can be at a higher elevation. I don't know. And what do you think? Don't you think it's going to be higher elevations as we mature, continue to mature here?
I'm, I'm not sure that the areas that you're talking about really have a significant landscaping standard requirement anyway.
Well, they want, you know, there's the school and there's, and then they're, they're talking about a, I don't know, a senior citizen place up there on Goldenview, you know, down at the end of the road.
Oh, they're talking that.
That's not gonna happen.
I haven't seen that happen.
I mean, yeah, but I mean, you know, those are, those are, those are, those are right at the same elevation where I'm at. I mean, I think commercial will, light commercial will follow suit eventually.
Well, a lot of it has to do with the density and the width of the road and the type of utility. Some people would argue that perhaps in those Alpine locations, those lots should be larger and maybe they should be unwell inseptic and they shouldn't be built to an urban standard. You know, if they weren't built to such an urban standard, then there would have been a lot of mature vegetation that would have been retained on that property. I'm not saying that that was the wrong thing to do. I'm just saying that when you get, you know, publicly dedicated streets and you get water and sewer install and rights away, then you are gonna lose a lot more of your vegetation in your, on twenty thousand square feet lots or fifteen thousand square foot lots and you build to an urban standard on an Alpine slope, then, then you've, you've got the problem that you have. But there is lots of mature vegetation at that elevation.
Mm-hmm. Or you go down, you go down to Girdwood, you know, Seward Highway, you know, it blows there. It's just tough.
See, the hillside had a little bit of a, a problem too, the beetle killed the cap in, up in that area. Connie is prominent at the point. The type of the development was an issue, the type of the soil conditions and groundwater of the condition, and then there was a lot of beetle. And, you know, that, you can't remember that, but it just happened. But if you look at most of the old subdivisions, I mean, we all think are so wonderful looking right now, they were effectively stripped. Try again, calling the village, you know, if you name them all, they just had a chance to mature. And now it looks like the trees have been there for a hundred years.
Yeah, and I agree.
Pretty young city.
But someone planted those trees.
That's right.
A lot of them. Someone planted those trees. I mean, that's an important difference.
No, it, you know, you just, you know, they need to be planted, they need to be cared for. And Connie's right, there's, you know, there are places in town where landscaping is all taken care of. Providence Hospital is probably the best example. You know, they have a landscaping crew, they, they move bigger plant material in town than anybody I've ever seen in Anchorage, and they take care of their stuff, and it looks good. You know, others don't put quite as much care into it. The municipal library, the SAC library, drive by there and take a look at the dandelion drop. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty sad.
Yeah, well, look at 15th Street, you know, and look at the weeds. You've been, spent a lot of money planting, but if you don't water and maintain it, nothing happens.
Well, the short example on B Street was rebuilt, I guess, last year. There are, they went through and did another warranty check, and the same hole in the ground will now have its fifth tree growing, going in, in the last year, in the public month. And the landscape contractor, who was the lowest bid, has gone out of business, so we're all, we're all paying for it, you know, it's crazy.
So you said, we already looked at the proposed rewrite for that landscape section from the same view, so this is just the table?
Yes, this is something that they came up with afterwards, because you guys said, let's go ahead and adopt that.
Right.
So we don't need to look at any of the landscape already done?
No, you've already done it, but they came up with this since then, and I wanted to get it to you.
All right, as an alternative compliance to what we have already discussed and, and will be voting on in our public determinations, yeah?
Right.
All right, okay.
Okay, let's go quickly to chapter...
Debbie.
Can I just ask a question then? What about the next, the table three that gives the units for the different L1 L2 trees? Are they not doing that one?
No, they're not.
Mike, we're from that.
To do, okay, where are we?
334.
What page was it?
I think it's 334, it's the table that...
Well, 335 determines how many units you put in in L1 and treatment.
Oh, okay.
How many units you put in in L3 bumper.
They've got a similar, a similar table.
Okay.
Debbie, that says arterial landscaping minimum with six feet, not an average, six shrubs per 20 linear feet of perimeter facing arterial.
Jim, I'm sorry, I don't have that. They talk in trees and, they said that their language is trees and shrubs, units.
I talked to them too.
Yeah, and so there, they have the table that has that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, any other questions? Okay, moving on.
Let's go to 14, and then we'll go back to five and six. 14.
Chapter 14?
Yes, it's definitions. And the first thing I want to talk about is that one of the prior meetings, we talked about defining the words should and shall. If you look at page 583 of your book, under J, shall is already defined. So I propose adding a sentence that said, it's on page two of the memo, the word should indicates that compliance is highly recommended and encouraged, but not mandatory. And the logical place to put that would be under J, which refers to mandatory and permissive terms. And then the only other definition that I have heard from anyone that I've received comments on is the Quonset hut definition.
You know, on this one right here, there's always a question about, well, is it just should, or does that include the word may, for example? And oftentimes, we do, we put in the statement there, may or similar discretionary language, because you use different language throughout the code usually. It's not always should.
Yeah, may is already defined.
It says the word may is permissive, indicating compliance is optional.
Right. I'm just saying that, you know, we don't always use the word should, we use other words as well, too. And there's always a question, is may the same as should? And the answer should be, yes, it is the same.
So Tim would probably like to talk about Quonset huts, I guess.
The only issue, I brought it up in that short presentation of a list of items, is that, and I don't have it in front of me, but there was a, you know, Quonset huts have been outlawed in town as a prohibited type of structure. I don't know that it's fully implemented, but in Anchorage's history, a lot of the Quonset huts came off the base early, came into town, were utilized, or all kinds of things. And what I wanted, what I feared in the definition of Quonset in there was that it was a definition of a structure style. And I think we're, in today's design rule, the rounded corrugated roof, or walls, or whatever it may be, is something that we don't want to throw out. We may want to use that as a structure type and a style. And they in fact might be a very efficient answer to some of our cost issues we're worried about.
I've got a question. What happens if you've got a portion of a building that meets this definition? Which I've seen a lot of entryways having a half-round cover, rib metal, they're not pre-fabricated.
Right, and I don't think it says pre-fabricated in there.
It said it's got to be one of the four.
So, I mean, there's a house in my neighborhood, it's a custom-designed house, and it has about half of the structure is a curved metal roof structure. Three-story windows, a typical roof, and that, and it pulls the light in and casts it down the entire wall inside the building. And I'm just concerned the way that it's written, that you've taken a roof structure and structured type and style and thrown it out. There's no consideration that it may be an architectural component that we want to use.
I have a different definition that I had submitted earlier, Quonset hut. I don't have it with me. No, no. In the Oceander era.
We spend a lot of time on that. Well, maybe you can wait.
I will, I will, if you could wait, if this can wait a week, when I get back to town, I'll send you the definition of Quonset hut.
My big concern is that this was a carryover issue from 30, 40 years ago, when nobody wanted more of the surplus Quonsets off the base to be built in town or moved around in town. And I think we're past that, and we're throwing it out. Ray might figure out that, get those pre-done, and it's the most effective roof and wall structure that there is.
Affordable housing.
What about non-housing? I mean, you know, we have, we have private and public airports, but Quonset was originally designed for shelter.
I've actually seen some of the garage structures that are, that are arched metal, they are corrugated, they're a great structural corrugation. And I think they are prohibited use.
What about the, the weather service on the San Lake Road? That is an example of that type of architecture.
That's a federal thing, they can do it everywhere.
No, but it's not an ugly, I mean, I'm going to get to that.
I think it's valuable to have, and I agree, you know, that there's...
Well, there's also temporary buildings around town that, that are, that's in their fabric.
I think they're better than Conexes.
Pardon?
Better than Conexes or something. You know?
You have Conexes, don't you?
Yeah.
If anybody's looking for a stylish, old military surplus Quonset, go on Coloff Street, just north of 88.
Yes.
And they've actually put cedar shingles on the whole thing.
It's beautiful.
It looks like a redwood tree fell down in the woods, and it's, it's cool looking.
Yeah, it's right behind the tires.
Marriott Tour, who used to work at the planning department here, just over here off of Piper Street, has an add-on to her original houses, the Quonset. And it's an awesome, awesome house.
They put, over Merrill, they put storefronts on them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, unless you're looking around the back, you can't even tell what's behind it. When you walk in, they've got it set up so you can't really tell that you're in a, you know, Quonset hut area, too.
The reason the military use them is because of just how flexible of space they were for the price that you paid. And I think that's where we're going, but it's not voluntary surplus anymore.
Is the problem with the definition, or is the problem with the fact that it's not a permitted use in the used districts?
I think you, I think it's been outlawed as a prohibited use.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I'm not convinced that...
And then you look at the, you look at the definition, and it's, it's, to me, it's a roof style that's been outlawed when I read it.
Is that why the definition is in there, Tom? It's because it's an outlawed use in certain districts? Is that what's going on? In all districts?
So do you have another definition for Quonset hut, or do you think that it should be outlawed?
I don't know.
No, really, you can talk.
Well, you know, maybe the solution, if, I didn't realize that Quonset huts were prohibited throughout the city, I guess that's a...
I didn't either.
I just, that's new to me. But maybe what you want to do, and the definition may be okay, but maybe you want to say that this definition and is not meant to be applied to the fabrication of structures utilizing aspects of this. I'm making up words right now. But that might be a way of getting around this particular problem. So you go to the definition of Quonset hut, and the very end there, you have this caveat statement that would indicate that this applies to Quonset huts, but does not apply to other design structures that may utilize aspects of this, or words that are...
What is the game plan on definitions? Are we going to take them up at the end, or are we taking them up when?
Well, these were just issues, specific issues that were raised during the course of our discussions. Dan, do you have a comment?
Oh, yeah. Under the provisionally adopted, you did, you took them out of the R5, which is currently allowed in.
Right.
And you took them out, and you'd also other the commercial areas, all out of municipality. However, Chapter 10, we put them back into the rule and into the commercial and industrial in Chapter 10, so it will really, really be allowing them in those cities.
All right, all right.
Commercial welcome? So Merrill Field, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Okay, that works.
Oh, Dan was saying Eagle River, though. I mean, that's the fly of the ball.
No, well, our...
So Eagle River likes Quonset huts?
So you can't do commercial, and you can't do Merrill Field?
No.
No, you can't.
No?
Under, I believe, under the provision adopted, you're not doing any of this anymore?
I don't, I'm not sure about this.
Well, what about non-conforming? Are they grandfathered in?
It isn't really defined as a...
I personally think they should be allowed in commercial or, I really do.
Why not industrial, too, for that?
Commercial and industrial.
I don't think it's, it's a prohibitive use, it's not even a use type, it's really a type of construction. I think where, I know in the rewrite that we've, in the provisionally adopted rewrite, where we, where we have limited them is in the residential design standards section specific. It is not prohibited as a use type in Chapter 5, it's just a type of structure.
You don't mind, you don't want a specific roof style or components of a structure?
I haven't. The current code outlaws it, and the provisionally adopted Title 21, the community prohibited as a design type in the residential design standards section, so...
But they allow soft-sided coverage.
I know where one is.
You know, I mean, you can go build something that blows up.
Telling you where it is.
It has air, or it's, or it's, it's, it looks like a Quonset hut, except for it's made out of fabric.
Like the dome?
Like a dome, or...
Yeah, like a dome, or...
Well, there's two out at the International Airport where joint services park their boings up.
Yeah.
And they were just, they were just put up.
Yeah, that's right. So just, just as information...
So I mean, that doesn't, I don't know why, why they could do that, because you couldn't have a metal structure that basically is the same thing.
What sounds like the brokerage is coming out of the residential section. It doesn't, it's not applicable to commercial industrial. That's what you're saying is coming from...
Okay, now, I correct myself. In the residential design standards section, in section 2107, 110G, under prohibited structures, it's just reserved. So at this point in the provisionally adopted section, it's, it's a reserved section, it does not prohibit Quonset huts. It is simply, there is a proposed amendment, a proposed Amendment 87, which recommends moving the Quonset hut definition to Chapter 14, and so it's just a definition. So it looks like we have a reserve section, we didn't resolve the Quonset hut issue in the provisionally adopted rewrite. So I don't, I don't know where it might be...
Well, if they couldn't, if they couldn't get it solved, I don't know that we're going to be able to get it solved, really, quite frankly.
Is the city worried about buying more, that you get more of these things, and them popping up all over? I mean, can we get rid of it all?
Well, any good, you know, I guess what I would say is, and I can only speak as a residential developer, any residential developer is probably going to, in their covenants, codes, and restrictions, not allow Quonset huts, you know? And they all have architectural control boards. Existing Quonset huts are probably grandfathered in as a non-conforming use. And so, okay, you guys that are in commercial, what do you want to do?
Allow it.
Allow it.
That's supposed to be the same way?
Absolutely.
The hard part is, is I have a little greenhouse that's one of these. You know, they have greenhouses, and there's a ton of them in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
This would outlaw them in residential, is what you're suggesting.
Well, it's reserved, nothing is stated yet.
They would be, they would be there, they exist there, they would be on the floor.
So it's reserved, not a prohibited structure, is what I heard.
Yeah, it says prohibited structure is the category, and then it just says the whole section is reserved. And what used to have Quonset hut is deleted.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Bowles, what have you done for Quonset huts in Chapter 10? Because it sounds like to me that's what we need to do for the rest of the municipality.
Allow them in the resident, in the rural areas. But they do, but they're there.
Quonset huts, accessory of principal use, a pre-fabricated structure usually made of corrugated metal, with a longitudinal lap cylinder, intended as a principal or accessory building, in Class B, commercial, industrial, TLI, and PR zoning districts, Quonset huts are permitted for use. In Class B residential zoning districts, Quonset huts are permitted accessory use in all zoning districts.
There you go.
Nothing new?
Happy? Okay, all right. Mr. Dugan, did you have anything you wanted to add to share with the group about Quonset huts?
I guess I would just say, does anybody know what, does anyone not know what a Quonset hut is? And if you don't want Quonset huts, just say you don't want them. Because if it's defined as a, if it's a, it's not a use, it's a structural, it's a structure type. And if, you know, you know, it's like skinny ties, eventually the style will come back again, and we'll be deciding a big... That's one of the problems that I have, a lot of these regulations. You look at the commercial science centers, it talks about plinths and columns and mansards and widgets and gugang. And so who's to say those are ever going to be popular, and it doesn't address what the future of architecture is? So I guess I don't have, you know, people are going to buy them, the market doesn't want them. So I think it's a, it's a utility building that's been suitable for certain types of use. Like Connie says, they're all going to get outlawed in the covenants for any residential subdivision. If they're industrial, that's, who cares? And if it's an office building, nobody will rent it.
Right. Okay, all right, let's move on.
Let's go to Chapter 5.
Mr. Phelps.
Connie, can we take a quick break?
Okay.
We can have a quick break, five minutes.
Connie, have you read Wade DeNar's laws? Have you read Rachel DeNar's laws?
I don't think they apply to pro bono work. Oh, yeah, that's it. Yeah.
No, uh, that was a couple days later.
We're just going to say my, uh, my-
I'm ready to add, right when this guy said, I mean, like, just jokingly. Nobody was complaining, I was like-
She just kind of, you know, like, swallows and-
Yeah.
Get it, George, let's have fun with it.
Oh, she gave us-
They didn't tell me about this 42 meaning of one, and that was the thing.
They saved a short list there.
I've got, I've got-
I hear you. Go good, I guess all the, all the-
My, 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 my cheese, my, yeah. My cheese tied down in my hand.
Yeah.
And I have a herpes shit on this.
Hey, listen, we had, so we had the first chair, and we had, we had the- Not with neighbors' yards. Or it's there. Never in your answer, it would take you to the-
I've got some, uh, tracks on the chairs, and then slide up the deck, it's like that. But I actually have herpes shit on this.
Do you really?
Yes. Electric.
What's that?
Electric.
Oh, electric, I'm a little impressed.
I said, what, what's the window?
Oh, yeah. Oh. You watch, they get, they get smaller. I'm supposed to watch that. Yeah, that's your idea. You want to say, I went to the-
Planning is only work section, so what do you need?
No, Dave, I won't even start thinking about, like, the- Yeah, when that group started testifying about how this is all a, a global takeover, that was real tough to call a takeover.
Some of it was 2020.
Okay, let's get, let's get back. Thank you very much. Grab your sandwich, grab a snack, the cookies are almost on. Okay, let's get going.
Where are we starting?
Chapter 5.
Chapter 5.
Okay. Bruce, residential-
So, in Chapter 5, uh, what we have tried to do is take about six tables and collapse them into one table. And the one table is what you see right here. And we tried to organize the table in a, I guess, might say in fairly straightforward fashion. At least we think so. We kept a lot of the nomenclature that was used in the previous table, like S for site plan, and M for master plan, and so forth and so on. So nothing's changed in that respect.
Bruce, would you hold up what you talked in front of us?
Yes, of course. It looks like this.
Raise it, Bruce.
I emailed everybody today.
Do you have a lot of uses?
There is an Excel. A word or?
It's Excel.
Bruce, Bruce, it was table of allowed uses?
Yeah, table of allowed uses. Yeah, you have it, I said you catch it together.
Yeah.
So, um, what this basically does is try to make it somewhat simpler to, to understand what uses are inside the community, and if they're permitted or not permitted, or whatever. There are some things that you also got, or should have got, when Sally sent out this email. Also a document that looks like this, so these are the changes that are identified to that particular chapter. And the, if you take a look at that, you'll see one talks about the tables. A lot of things were deleted in terms of districts, and you know that. One of the aspects of this table is that it reflects the previous Chapter 4. So to the degree that we added things, districts, to Chapter 4, or deleted things from Chapter 4, it reflects those changes in Chapter 4. So for example, um, the R4A was deleted. The MT1, Midtown 1, and Midtown 2 were deleted. The various mixed-use zones were deleted. The downtown zones were deleted, but they were retained in the sense that you have to have a zone for the downtown. So there's a footnote that basically says, until the downtown zones are developed, and in certain side of this table, the existing zoning ordinance applies. The areas, the two things that were added, were actually added in the previous Chapter 4, which is the B1B, it's community, commercial, district, and the transition district, which is kind of like the old, I guess, no, it's a transition district. So, that's kind of like the, the short description of what's happened here. So what you then have is pretty much the things that we're accustomed to. If you're looking on, if you look at the top here, it's going to say residential, commercial, industrial, and other. And, you know, it's all consolidated. You don't have six tables to work with, it's all inside one table right now. It has the zoning districts on the top, and you just basically read down to identify the uses that are identified either as permitted, or conditional, or prohibited, or require a site plan, or require a master plan.
Just interrupting for a second, the X means that something was there, and it was deleted, because I had no other way to show that.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah. I was going to mention that. Thank you for mentioning it for me. And so, that's like the basic structural change. Certain things, things were changed as a result of trying to consolidate these things. So, for example, rather than public and institutional uses, the wording is now community uses, and you have more uses identified. And you've moved, for example, under four, Club Convention Center, from where it is at the present time, and put under entertainment and recreation category. So you have movement in at least these first three, four, or five. Things that were in one area are more appropriate, we think, in another area. But they really don't change. They're just, they're movement, they're, where they're put in the table changes. One of the changes that is significant, though, is when you look at the table, it won't say office anymore. It will say retail services. And retail services does not include just office, but includes the normal range of retail services. And so the definition had to be changed to reflect, it wasn't just an office orientation. It would include, and sales, including, so you look at 6, for example. I'm looking at 6 right now, item 6. It says professional services and sales, because now we have sales inside this, including certain types of uses that are associated with commercial functions. And continues with accessory, uh, uses and the like. So, that is a significant change. And oftentimes, what also will happen is that you have a, you take a number of things that sound the same and just kind of generalize them. So there's vehicle sales, and vehicle service, and they all are kind of the same. And so they're lumped into vehicle storage, or sales in a more general way. And so one of the things you try to do is collapse the number of zoning sub-districts, or zoning definitions, if you will. And one of the reasons we tried to do that is for reasons of clarity, it seemed to be clearer. And the other reason is that if you were to have a detailed listing of uses, and for example, in the commercial area, you change from your use in that building to another use in that building, well, under the, like, the proposed code, you may have a problem, because it may be, it may not be an allowed use. It may be a non-conforming structure. We wanted to avoid that. So some of these things were generalized, so that if you're moving between one type of commercial use over to another type of commercial use, you wouldn't be presented with that particular problem. There was a couple things in here that came from other recommendations. So like, for example, 8 is a recommendation that came from a previous discussion. That talks about the Parks and Recreation Board of Supervisors. I wasn't actually there for the discussion.
What's the pink, what's the pink?
The pink.
It's, 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 the whole box is pink. What does that mean?
You got to help me here? Pink, I don't-
Second page in bottom middle there. Permitting R4. Yeah, but, you know, I, I, I think the red is new, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Sheated boxes?
Sheated blocks of pink. I think it was doing, it changed. It could have been a conditional, and became a permitted use.
But wouldn't that be just a red lead, like?
Actually, that was supposed to be taken out. Because it's confusing.
Okay, I was, I'm trying to figure out what that is.
And I just kind of saw this today, I haven't had a chance to really review it real carefully. But my recommendation was to delete that, because it's simply confusing.
Okay.
Delete the pink?
Well, whatever color it is, this right here, not, not the P's inside it, but the pink box.
Just ignore the pink.
Ignore the pink. The pink goes away.
There is no pink.
Well, I have a couple of comments here, because I think in our prior discussions, we've, uh, we've made some adjustments here, that the RO zone can go back into the residential, and that it is a permitted use, and that, um, single-family attached and detached and townhouses, and two-family dwelling units are, should be allowed to be permitted in the RO. And then in the R3 and R4 zone, um, to add that single-family attached and detached are also permitted in the R3 and R4 zone, along with two-family. And that it would be up to the market to determine, we're not taking away the opportunity for mid and higher density, but that it is market-driven.
So, so this is going to get changed again, this is?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's what Chicago is indicating.
Yes.
Okay.
So R3 and R4, we're putting P's under single-family and-
Attached and detached and two-family dwelling units. And we had previously discussed moving the RO over to the residential. That doesn't preclude it from having office, um, but that it does-
Because it's in commercial now.
I know. And so that, the RO, the ability to have residential in RO goes back to what is in current code.
Okay.
And so what gets added into RO that isn't there now? Single-family?
Attached and detached and two-family dwelling units. And it belongs over in the, in the residential area.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I have a question. Education there, charter schools, I mean, number one, I support the, the reduction. I mean, we've argued this for many years, and I personally felt that was too cumbersome, that you could end up with just a slight change of definition in two different zones. I support it. But under education on the front sheet, charter schools would now have to do a major site plan, which is a huge financial undertaking.
Where is that?
Under elementary, middle, high school, and education?
Under, a charter school, um, other types of private schools. I mean, I understand ASD has to do a major site plan, and I don't have a problem with that, because we're spending the government money, spending our money. But a charter school, if you have small charter school, I don't know if a major site plan, I think that would just really limit that, because-
How about ACS? That's not small.
That's not small.
Yeah.
And I, that brings up another question, but, um, that's a good point. But maybe we have a size differential, maybe that's getting too complex. I don't know if I got a-
Well, I think there are probably planners that would do, for a charter school, pro bono work perhaps, for a major site plan, if you're-
Dan, what?
At least, at least nothing worth the cost for, you know, playing favorite project.
Because that's sort of the way it happens.
What are we talking about?
Well, you know, just back up one second. I think it really is a size-related thing. Because, you know, if it's a, if it's a 50-kid school, and charter schools, one thing, if it's the size of a high school, or, or, or bigger, you know, then, then I don't know how you require the public schools to go through it, and the private schools not do it, if they each have a thousand students. You know, if you're asking, some parents, because the trip generation, the bus traffic, the impact of the neighborhood is going to be the same.
That's right.
And, and that's what we're really trying to weigh in for type.
Yeah.
I think it's a size.
I think a major site plan is a, a little bit of a hill of mine.
But those funds come from the increased school history. It is, it's, the, the money's all the same.
Okay, well, what's, what's not a charter school, but a private school? A private school, then, where the funds would not come from the school in this street?
Right.
I'm just pointing out what, what discussions have gone on in the past.
Well, I think, in my opinion is, you know, I, I happen to agree with Mr. Potter, is you're dealing with traffic, you're dealing with-
We heard that the other night, very live player night, and I recognize that. On fire stations, I think we have some fire stations in residential areas now.
Yes, we do.
This would not allow them.
Okay. So I need to go back and find where they're identified in the current code?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Whatever is allowed in the current code. I think, I think, I think the goal of this simplification, if we, if we can look at this table as a simplification, the goal here, for these allowed uses, is to keep everything that is in the conditional, everything that's in the current code, and allow mixed use in certain zones with the applicable, uh, requirements for mixed use. Is that your understanding?
It, it is, except that, for example, where you find the S and you find the M, that's a permitted use, but it requires a site plan, or requires a master plan.
Right.
So, there is a little bit of difference here. The difference is that it's permitted use, but you have to have a site- The difference is that it's permitted use, but you have to have a site plan or a master plan.
Yep, and I agree with that because they have impact.
Railroad freight terminal, I'm thinking of Alaskan Mill and Bead area, I'm thinking of, oh, off of Clat there. A lot of places, there's sightings, and by definition, before, a sighting became a freight terminal, I think that has to be allowed in B3 as a permitted use.
In B3?
Yeah. That's the one that pops up. I see we've got the industrial covered, but that's the one that pops up there.
Okay.
I think utility facilities have to be allowed at all the residential. I'm thinking of substations.
Well, the substations are allowed.
No, I agree with your view there.
Facility is a much larger facility.
Yeah, okay. All right, I agree.
Government offices? I think, do we want to check on government offices only being in B3 and I1 and PLI? Aren't there other government offices in other locations? I think we talked about that at one point in time.
Well, they're in PLI, they're in B3, and they're I1 now, that I know of, in terms of government offices.
Yeah, it depends on what you consider government offices.
Right, I mean, they're not in B1A, for example. I don't know them in residential areas, and so... But if I miss one, let me know.
Bruce, what you're going to find out on the fire station is much like the schools. In the current code, they are permitted to go into the residential, but by kind of practice policy internal to the city, you know, the school district is that they typically rezone their sites to PLI. They don't cap it.
Right.
You know, I agree with your approach to put them in, so in the residential, but that's why everybody looks at them now and they see it from PLI.
So, you think it's fair to put them as permitted use in residential or keep it as a PLI with rezoning it to a PLI?
You know, with that type of use that could have impact, you know, I think it was not a bad thing for Station 7 over in Sand Lake, but especially the one in Southport, when it's going right into the middle of a residential neighborhood, even though it's on a collector minor arterial, that there probably could be some evaluation.
Yeah, definitely. No doubt about that. Right.
So, you know, it went through a public facility site plan review and there's a problem with that.
Okay, so what you're saying is that permitted in some of the residential zones, similar to current code, but have a site plan requirement with it? Okay, all right.
Where would Trojan track fall on this thing? This thing, the way it's written, is if it's not listed, it's prohibited.
No, that's not the way it's... That's not the way it's written. It's listed and it's allowed, and there's the ability to make the interpretation that it can be similar to it.
That's changed. It's a very significant change.
It's a significant change. That's right.
All right. Where is that covered?
You know, I don't think it is covered right now, but it needs to be covered.
Because right now, what it says is ain't listed and ain't allowed.
Yeah, I need to go back and look at that.
Yeah, that may answer something.
Yeah, because this thing tries to generalize these things more, and that means that you've got to have some flexibility in the administration of it to say, well, this is similar to that, although it's not exactly the same word, it has its similar characteristics.
That's a 180-degree change from where we are now.
It is different. That is correct.
Okay. All right, good comment. Any other comments on this?
I'm just looking at the waste, the commercial I2, waste and salvage, which is solid waste transfer facility, which is permitted. You know, nobody's been next to a solid waste transfer facility lately. Has anybody?
Only one.
Yeah. This is the one?
And...
Westchester.
Oh, the one.
Found by the postal office.
There's one off of Homer Drive.
Yeah.
You know. And I'm not one for regulation stuff, but I've got to tell you, the traffic, and of course, the smell when the wind blows is amazing. And I would just say that it probably should have some public input when... Not that there's a lot often going to be put up, but eventually, it's just... And depending on where you put it, where the I2 is, you know, a lot of times, people will drive in and their trash isn't covered until the... Right before they go across the scales coming in to dump, because that's...
They drive up, get right there, so they get covered up.
Yes, they don't get to find, but as they come in, they're blowing everything up. So, I just think there should be some... A little more review on that.
All right. I think that, you know, I still think that if you're talking about I2, that's the right location for these guys, but I don't think it should be a conditional use because that makes it very questionable if they can go in there. So, I think maybe an S would be more appropriate, a site plan review.
Dana, are you thinking public or private?
What's that?
Public or private?
On the transfer?
Yeah.
Either one. You know, if it's a recycling thing, it's a lot different impact than if it's just regular...
Yeah, because it's a... The current facility that you're talking about was, again, a public facility. It was a public facility.
Yeah, it's municipal. It's municipal.
And if it was a private activity, say like CDI or something down off Ship Creek, that's in an I2, heavy industrial.
Yeah, and see, I'm right down from that. That's typically not a problem. But now, if you're... Again, it depends on what's going in, and that's the review. I mean, if it's waste, you know what I call, you know, home waste or whatever, that's going to the landfill versus being recycled or getting... Being assimilated to ship outside, like metals and whatnot, I think two could be different things.
You know, the problem we have here is, I think, is that if you make it either an S or a M, I don't know if you're going to get to what you want to get to because that means it's a permitted use at that location. What you're looking at is the site design aspects of it, but what you're saying, it may not be the right location for that use. That means you've got to take it out of P and make it into conditional use.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the one we have, there's some issues with it. And fortunately, it's not on King Street with I2. You know, I mean, it would be a disaster down there as far as, you know, the neighborhood. But it would be permitted under this. They could actually skip it down into some I2 land just, you know, on King Street.
So, you think that it really should be a conditional use?
Well, I don't know. I don't, Bruce. I'm just saying somehow that there's a couple of things that have to be looked at. I mean, it's a, you know... I had a business 10 years by it, so I saw over time, you know, what it did, and if it's in the right area, there's no issues. I could see it in Port Berkeley. But because I have I2 spread out all over the place, next to I1 and some other stuff, that it could present a problem, especially now that we're mature community. So, I don't know what... Some type of review needs to happen, but...
Yeah, I think that everybody's got kind of a sense that it needs to have a review. The question is, is it going to go to conditional use or, you know, its problematicness of whether or not it's going to go there or not? Or you want to have it go through a site plan review to deal with the bad aspects of it? That's kind of like the choice that you have to make here.
I...
Okay.
Something. I'm just saying something.
Okay. All right, okay.
I suppose you could classify it, then, if it was a utility, as classified by the regulatory condition, it could be a conditional use.
Mm-hmm.
Because if it's privately owned and effective as a utility, like if we sold out our solid waste facilities to a private operation, it wouldn't be public anymore, so they might skate that way, but it is still a regulatory utility, and that might be a catch because I don't see a lot of people going out, going into business to collect garbage when it's a regulatory, any utility.
General, under warehouse and storage, general outdoor storage, the definition before caught every contractor's yard, and so I think that should be a permitted activity in B3 because a lot of small contractor yards are in B3.
Yes, that's correct.
Warehouse and storage, under general outdoor storage.
Right.
And then, on motor freight terminal, I think right below that, I think of RC and yellow freight. I don't know for a fact where they are. I think a couple of them may be in B3. I don't know for a fact.
I don't know for a fact either. I thought it was I1.
And there's a lot of warehouses in B3.
Outdoor storage?
Well, it was before. That counts.
You know, I wouldn't want to be a B3 retail or office owner and have somebody like Block Construction out there, lay down your storage yard for all the bones next door and have that reviewed.
That's what is now. A lot of contractors are now in B3.
I prefer being an I1.
There's going to be an I1, too.
But combined office and yard.
Yeah.
On that one.
That's where it's supposed to be.
Well, supposed to.
Right, yeah.
Well, I think it's what kind of contractor. You know, if you're a mechanical contractor and all your pavitations inside, that's something...
Earthmoving contractor.
Your earth mover, that's a different type of contractor, and if you're, you know, a concrete contractor, that's even different.
Have a list of examples of...
If you're a vertical contractor, steel, direct...
Well, I think that...
If you're a housing contractor, you should be not valid anyway.
I'm a state owner, so I'm a mallow.
Hey, Bruce, what brought me to that is I saw that, I just noticed disposal site and a site review, but the solid waste transfer facility didn't, and I kind of jumped out at it when I saw that.
So, solid waste transfer is... Oh, I see what you're saying. It's a P right now in I2.
Yeah.
It's a site review, it's not a disposal site.
Yeah.
So, probably it should be S.
Yeah, it should be S.
Should it also be under PLI?
Which one?
Solid waste transfer.
Yeah, probably should be. Yep.
Okay. Any other suggestions?
General outdoor storage under PLI also, because the government itself has...
I would just make a request that if people have other ideas about changes, I'd be more than... I would like to know what your thoughts are, quite frankly.
Yeah, yeah. And please, CC Sally on that and myself.
Right, yeah.
Dan, and then, Don, did you have a comment?
Yeah.
And then, we've got to wrap this up. We've got other things to do. Yes?
Just a question. Do you intend to have movie theaters permitted use in the I2?
In the I2, yes.
Because of... Coda? Or not Coda, the one I'm holding?
Hold on.
Do you want to put it down? Do you want to put a theater down by the South English Target? That is zone I2.
Yep, there was discussion.
We tried to rezonate to B3, but...
All right. Don, and then, we're going to wrap it up.
Okay. Couple of quick things on the... I know, is governmental office defined somehow different than office? Because that was one of the things we tried to do, in my view, with various other people.
It is different.
Okay. But you've got police stations and fire stations, and those kind of governmental functions listed separately.
Right.
And so, I don't understand what the difference is, and maybe if you explain that, because it makes reference to the chapter that describes what office uses.
Right. I mean, there is a section, a new section on governmental administrative and civic buildings, and it has a new definition and new requirements for it. And so, the structures you're talking about, police and fire stations and libraries and things of that nature, all governmental facilities, but they're not government administrative offices. An example of administrative office might be this building, for example.
See, I don't differentiate this from any other kind of office building. When we design offices, they're offices. People live in boxes and work on computers, and they're offices. I don't know what it... I can't draw a single distinction between the Atlas Building and a tenant in the Atlas Building that isn't the state. I mean, I just don't get the distinction that you're drawing. It's a government employee somehow different than a private sector employee and that sort of thing. I don't get the distinction.
Maybe hours of operation.
Would it be better if... Would it be more appropriate to just include police and fire? People don't mind having a fire station near their house?
Some government offices could be...
Well, but a unique fire station or a unique police, you know, officer, but I've seen police substations in retail malls, you know, and they just move in. I mean, there's nothing unique about that.
Okay. Carol, you got a comment?
Well, they could be hours of operation. Some government offices have been opened up to be temporary shelters during harsh winters, so there's a whole host of different uses in governmental offices that you wouldn't anticipate in a normal office.
I think this is another throwback historically, right from around, that the way to make sure that downtown had people down there working, and the only ones that they could actually control were if it was going to be the governmental center of the state, and that's why government offices and/or office buildings were held to be downtown in the B1A or the B2A, B or C. And there was a distinction between government offices, which would mean that they could have an office inside a building owned by somebody else that happened to be the office was. But a governmental office building was a building built owned by the government. And the only place that you could do that was supposedly downtown.
Right. Okay, so there's a new section called governmental administrative and civic buildings that has a definition to it, and it is basically along the lines of direct services to the public. However, the better way of dealing with this is rather use a government office to use governmental administrative and civic buildings, which is the new definition, at least.
Okay.
Because that does have the information about where things can go in terms of municipal functions throughout the downtown and other areas, which is important.
Bruce, I don't see hospitals.
They're there.
They're there.
They're there. I just have to find it. Where it says healthcare, hospital?
Okay, we need to move on, so let's... If you have other questions, comments, Tom, do you have anything briefly you'd like to mention?
Yeah, 30 seconds. Just for the commission's consideration, the issue response memo on five and six provides a policy discussion and information. And we appreciate the work and can see that there are good refinements in it. The department strongly recommends that the commission keep to refinements and that it keep to the provisionally adopted table. More information as to why that is is in the table, while it is a product of eight years of careful calibrating by a lot of people. And its changes to it have impacts throughout the code, and it streamlines current code 350 uses in the current code down to 150 uses, and it groups uses a lot more. But where it kept uses separate, defined them separate, that is because it had a relationship to very different land use impacts and use specific standards.
Thank you. We know all that, and we stand by our decisions and recommendations. Okay. All right. Moving on. Sally?
I think we should also discuss the table of accessory uses.
Yeah, I will say right now that I have not had a chance to look at this, so...
I couldn't hear what Sally said. What was that?
That we should also look at the table of accessory uses, and maybe what would be good, given the time constraints, is if everyone would look at both of those tables and forward comments to Bruce, copying me, on any of those, you know, because it's hard to look at it and...
Just copy all.
Copy everybody.
Copy everybody.
Rather than trying to look at it right now and decide and...
I prefer not to do it right now because we really haven't looked at this carefully, and we need to. But any comments from you guys would really help.
And then, you need to look at it, just think through it.
I will make one comment, is that when you are looking at this chart, I would like you to pay particular attention... I will make one comment is that when you are looking at this chart, I would like you to pay particular attention to item number one, which is accessory dwelling units. And where accessory dwelling units are allowed. This is probably one of the most controversial of all of the table, of all of the definitions for accessory uses. We are going to have to have some deliberation on it when we are having our deliberations. And as you know, there has been an ordinance that permits accessory dwelling units in, on lots of greater, I believe, than twenty thousand square feet. There has been a lot of discussion about allowing accessory dwelling units in the R one and R one A zoning districts. There are square footage requirements. There is front door requirements where the door can be. There's lots of architectural control for all of that. I want you to think long and hard about accessory dwelling units. There's one part in the current ordinance that says that, you know, only two people can live in it. So what if you have a young couple and she gets pregnant? Do they have to move out and all that sort of thing? So this is an important residential discussion because it does. It does allow for multi-generational families, which we have a changing demographic for. And I want you to keep in mind that when we're talking about accessory dwelling units, that they can be, you can deed restrict them in new developments so that they do not, that they, the covenant's codes and restrictions can prevent them from occurring. Okay, all right, so I've.
That was actually, the whole ADU is my whole next issue because. Because Amendment forty-three puts them in R one and R one A, the proposed amendment. And I handed out to everybody what the current law is and the current code, I forwarded that. So I think we should discuss it. We should get people's opinion as to what do we want to, what do you want to do with this and.
Which recommendation, which recommendation was that?
Pardon?
Where?
Oh, it's just on the issues.
Oh, on the issues, okay.
One, two, three, four bullet points.
Just a point of information. After receiving the results of the Anchorage housing market analysis and the public comments, the department is, and the issue response on issue five, chapter five, number fifteen, specifically about ADUs, we're recommending that as part of the rewrite, we table that proposed amendment. Take up the issue of ADUs and other potential solutions to housing problems as, as we take up perhaps something to the effect of a small lot ordinance. And similar to what the housing study recommends, basically look at those.
You know, Tom, I think that this group is well enough versed because we've spent since last November. And I'm not willing to put off the ADU discussion and deliberation. And I'm not willing to put off. We are hopeful to have some material to recommend regarding small lot ordinance. I'm not willing to wait on this, on this issue.
I was, I was just letting you know the department, just preempting, you know, someone around the room.
I, I appreciate that.
Connie, Don brought up something about the accessory dwelling units with the duplex. Is that a way to have a third triplex?
That wasn't, I've never understood it to be that way, that it was for an accessory dwelling unit in a single family home. That's my understanding. Is that your, that's, I'm getting a lot of nods around the head, around the table. Getting a lot of head nods around the table, whatever. Yeah, that is, that is my, that is my understanding. One thing that I think you might want to consider, there are areas in Anchorage that I know that are significantly geographically opposed to having, allowing accessory dwelling units in the R one, R one A zone, maybe in the R six zone as well, in certain geographical areas. I happen to live in downtown and I can see a significant benefit in having accessory dwelling units in the downtown area, particularly because one of the, one of the issues is, is that, is that you want to have a more walkable downtown. You want to create more people in the downtown area in general, not just during regular business hours. So one thing that we might think about is, you know, looking at ADUs in a geographical location close to, you know, town centers and all that sort of thing, regardless of what that's on. But I mean, I can tell you that, you know, in other subdivisions like Heritage Estates in Eagle River or Turnigan View Estates in South Anchorage, they're going to be highly opposed to the ability because their covenant's codes and restrictions allow only for single family residences. So if you put an ordinance out or a revision to Title twenty-one that allows accessory dwelling units, does that take precedence over the covenant's codes and restrictions for the subdivision? I don't know the answer to that. It does not.
Oh, because your more, your covenants are more restrictive than zoning anyway.
Okay, all right, so.
So Connie, on the downtown, so would you propose a reduction in lot size?
That doesn't have anything to do with accessory dwelling units.
I thought that was the, that next to twenty thousand square feet.
Well, yes, I mean, that's what the current ordinance is. But this would allow, this would allow accessory dwelling units in any zone that takes away.
Regardless of lot size?
Yes.
If you look at the existing, I kind of tried to, on the current code, I tried to put a bracket around where you should read to direct your attention if you didn't want to read the whole thing. And then that's what is currently allowed. But then what they're proposing is it would just be allowed in R one and R one A.
Were, sorry, were, and we, we did mention in the issue response that if the commission were to want to go ahead with an ADU ordinance, that it do look at, that it should look at a geographic provision relative to downtown and midtown as well as possibly what is called a dispersion type provision that limits the concentration for the R L I. Kind of a neat point. You were, you released thought on about downtown and the accessory dwelling units. The inlet tower recently sold and they converted it from a hotel to an apartment. They rented almost immediately and they have a waiting list of something like six months. And there is a big demand in town for that. If it can be done right.
Yeah, and the McKay Building, you know, that renovation, full, you know, efficiencies, you know, running for eight, nine hundred dollars a month.
Well, then you've got someone looking after your house too when you're not there. You've got a lot of people to travel with or like to have.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not, like I said, I'm a speed, I guess, I guess, I just think of what's happening with lot sizes and how that could, it could really.
Can it get bigger?
Well, no, no.
Dana?
Downtown is a pretty small lot.
Dana, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to take you to lunch and I'm going to take you to subdivisions and show you what the rest of the world is like. Okay? You need to broaden your point of reference.
Dana, I think the worst thing to note is that you're not necessarily.
Ray and I will do that.
At least I get a free lunch.
Yeah, you'll get a free lunch.
It's not a suggestion that you're going to be increasing the lot coverage. It doesn't, it doesn't potentially change the massive structure or anything. It's just an allowance that within the square footage, you've got an ability to have some small dwelling unit that you can rent out if you want to for your family member or kid or whatever you want to do.
I just, you know what I think of, and it's probably wrong, is, is at the intersection out there, before you get to Houston, all those, those single little buildings, those little.
Supposed to be child presuming.
Yeah, delivery places, you know, all those little accessory dwelling units that people are living in. And I think of that and maybe you're thinking the wrong thing, but I could just see a bunch of.
Those are actually site conduits.
Ray and I are going to take you, take you out to it.
That's what comes to my mind.
I think, Connie, your point is really well made that, because I think a lot of cities, and in fact, if you look at older, these exist in Anchorage. I mean, they exist from long ago in the older parts of town and they're actually pretty well done. You know, they're usually designed for one person just by simple fact that that's the size. But I think that as someone that would like to see them move forward in certain parts of town, I think, I think we don't get anywhere by just allowing them straight out in our one on one. And I think if you do that, you might as well not put it forward because it will get, it will get defeated. So I think there does need to be some thought of where those areas are that are most appropriate. Typically, those are neighborhoods that have a decent ability to have excess parking on the street. So the street is designed such a way that supports that overflow parking. So I just, you know, I would just want us to be sort of thoughtful on where we want them to be. Otherwise, it'll be a, just an exercise that ends up where it ended up five, eight years ago or whenever that was that.
I think the seat isn't all that great.
We've been keeping records on the number of ADUs that have gone through the review process. And it is less than ten per year that go through the legal processes. So taking the time to go through a deliberative process with the community is, from a policy level, may, you may end up ending gaining more in the end than by going through that deliberative process.
Well, that's because it's the, the current policy is too restrictive and doesn't make any sense. And so that's why no one's going through it. But I can tell you, they do exist. And I can tell you, in subdivisions, we get this request all the time when people want to build a two thousand to three thousand square foot house. And they want to sneak in a first floor bedroom with an access from the side of the house. And, and then they want to put in a little kitchen.
You forgot about bootlegging the kitchen in the basement.
Yeah, and bootlegging the kitchen in the basement, you know, that's what they, that's what they want to do, you know? And Dana, we could probably put three or four ADUs in your house.
I'm going to disagree. Our question's more because I need more than one free lunch.
All right, I think, does anyone else have anything they want to share about ADUs? All right, moving on.
So where are we going to leave that? Just for further discussion when, when you have your deliberations? Are we going to?
Do you want us to send you our thoughts or?
Well, we're going to have to decide whether we support the amendment, which the amendment says that they're allowed in R one and R one A, or we're going to have to not support that amendment. We're going to have to, you know, it has to be addressed. We don't have to address it in here at this work session. But is the plan just to address it at the?
I think we're going to have some heartfelt deliberations.
I think we can vote.
And because we need to vote and we're not voting here because this is just a work session.
When you talk about municipal Y.
Well, we can limit in any way that we want, we want to.
Can I ask how, how one would limit geographically?
I was thinking of the language.
So you have a zoning code. If you were to distinguish R one, how would it, how would it be done practically?
Absolutely. Same way we define downtown. In the code, there's a, there's a geographic definition of streets or whatever you want to do.
So, so if you want to do airport hikes or something like that, right?
The university medical district area, and you draw a line that goes around the area.
But you literally geographically call out that, that area, the R one district within this boundary.
And right now, I think it's fully supported by the law.
Yeah, I think the U Med district is a, is a great example of where, where ADUs would be, would be very appropriate.
Can I just ask Tim, you believe everywhere or within limited areas? Or do you think it should be across the board, R one, R one A, or within limited areas?
I think it should be in R one and R one A within geographic areas. If we do it across the board, I think there's been a lot of problem, have a lot of pushback. I think it's fully defensible and supportable with the twenty twenty-five and everything else in specific districts downtown. I mean, what Ray said is absolutely right. It's absolute, it's just a desert out there of available places. But the other thing that Connie might be able to point out to Dana is that these exist all over the city already.
And in your neighborhood.
All over the city. Despite the census. The downstairs, the basement. And they should be.
I like the separate building idea.
In my day, you may want to be, move into one of these, one of these cities. So don't push too hard.
The only part of it that bugs me is in Turnigan, some of the houses had garages that weren't connected. So you can have separate garages. And there is an instance where a guy next to my father-in-law is bootlegging one in and he started putting the separate building that's taller than the original structure. When we start getting into separate buildings, then the neighbors would get upset.
I would just say that that's the classic urban ADU is the separate garage building.
Yeah, it's the carriage unit above the garage.
So is that what we're supposed to be doing then?
It could include that. It could include something in addition to that, that would be attached.
You do things like.
Or you could have a height restriction that says the accessory dwelling unit can be no taller than the main structure.
With parking and utilities appropriately available for the.
They might not even have a car.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't know. If there's two people, there could be two more cars.
If there's two people. And you need to go over my name. Close enough to the university that there's eight or ten guys that will, that will rent a house in a, in a college building, you know, so, you know, they're, they're not.
I'm not against them. Really, I'm not.
That works in an ADU. You know, you got eight cars plus seven snow machines, a couple of boats and the other crap out there.
All right, we've got to start, we've got to focus our attention down to this end of the table and pick on someone else. So let's, let's move on. Let's move on. We're going to have this discussion with our deliberations at the next meeting.
Well, before we go to chapter six, are there other issues that Tom raised in his memo that anyone wants to discuss on chapter five?
I haven't seen his memo.
He sent it out email today and I think there's one over there.
Yesterday. Here's, here's a copy.
Some of this really worked there.
Digest of your lunch break.
We're supposed to do this at lunch. All right.
Well, I guess let's go to six and then first look at it.
We're on to chapter six?
Yes.
So the first question is, chapter six is dimensional standards. And the question is, kind of going through my memo on some of the issues. Based on what you've done in some of the other chapters, we need to amend the table to delete some of the districts, the zoning districts that are gone now or potentially gone, if that's the way you vote, in line with what you discussions were. But the first question is, should the setback height and lot coverage requirements stay the same as they are under existing code or should they be changed? There's a number of differences in the charts.
Well, my recommendation for the residential, and I'm not familiar with the commercial, is that the setback height and lot coverage requirements stay the same. Because if they do not, you are really taking away economic opportunity. And I don't think that that is the intention, or should be the intention, of the provisionally adopted chapters. I think what we're trying to do is improve our community, improve the appearance of our community and the aesthetics of it. But on the one hand, and still balance the housing needs on the other hand. And I think we can do that by reinstating some of the building criteria and by supporting enhanced landscaping without taking away the, the current ability and entitlement that we have for the number of lots and the number of units that can be built in this community, which is of a diminishing ratio to begin with. Ray?
Have you had any consideration for single story homes being able to utilize the forty percent lot coverage, especially on the smaller houses? It's sometimes extremely difficult to get a ranch style home that people want on a lot. And if it happens to be zone R two M, then you're golden. It's the, it's the best scenario, but not always in the best neighborhood.
Right.
And I don't know if anybody's run into that, but it would be a blessing to be able to, to utilize forty percent for single family or single story.
I think we, I think that's a good point. And I think we. I think that's a good point, and I think we will, if we can develop in time our proposal for small lots, it would fall under that category. But if not, I do support that for single-story homes, 40%.
Can I propose that to the commission to see if that would be suitable?
We can propose it as an amendment, and we'll address it in our deliberations.
Would that be like the R1 and R1A?
Same for...
Right now in Hollywood Vista, they're zoned such that you can't have 40% lot coverage because of the old zoning. And it just seems to work really well for single-story.
Is that North Point? Are you talking about North Point?
Yeah, if you don't have it, you're toast.
Yeah.
So looking at the chart, you want 40% as the maximum lot coverage in R1, R1A?
For single...
In all zoning districts that allow single-family, one, a single-story, single-family homes that are of a single story. That's what we're looking for.
You want to say ranch, but what's the technical word, right?
A single-story home.
What about R5?
So you want to...
Yeah, 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 R5, yeah.
So basically, it would be R5, it would be R1, R1A, it would be R5, it would be R7.
It's R2.
Because the rest of them, no, but those already have.
They don't have 40% lot coverage. They do?
They do.
They do?
They do.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
So just wherever it's less than 40 for residential, you want it to be increased to 40?
On single-story.
On single-story. On single-story. Dan?
But if you're dealing with a 20,000 square foot block, and are acre and quarter, is that still what you want to do?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, still with the large lot.
Well, it's probably not very practical, and probably no one would do that, but...
Wonder.
Yeah, it'd be like...
I'm not... Somebody wants to build a 20,000 square foot house on one floor, they can get another lot.
Yeah. Still close and everything.
There's a lot of those in town.
Well, you just don't run into the problem. You know, there's acre lots out there that you can cover 30%, and you're not going to build, well, or five-acre or two-and-a-half-acre lots, you could build a 20,000 square foot house on it.
They're going to the hostel.
You know, I'm not really worried about those people because they can always go get some sort of variance.
If they got that much money.
If they've got that much money.
Well, then they can be turned into hostels.
Yeah. All right, okay, thank you.
But no parking.
But no parking.
And you want that only if it's a single-story?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a tough sell to move two-story into that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
And there's a lot of aging, communities aging, people don't want stairs, and their opportunities are more limited, especially with the smaller lots.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Yeah, I support that. That's a good idea. Okay.
Let's talk about commercial height restrictions.
That's on B3.
Yeah, and in our discussion of that, I go two weeks ago, we recommend that the height limitation that was proposed be eliminated. It goes back to what it is right now, unlimited.
I don't think I was here for that discussion, so what was the...
Well, I mean, the proposed code had a height limit of, I'm going to say 45 feet, but I could be wrong in that. And when the 45 feet, you could exceed that, and you could exceed it by going through basically a bonus-type system. And we're looking at, and maybe more sensitive us, is to allow the market to operate in B3 and to eliminate the height restrictions so you can have development that makes sense for that particular area. In terms of the mixture of uses, we provide for a mixture of residential and commercial uses within structures, but we eliminated the height requirement of 45 feet or whatever it was.
What's proposed now is on page 260, under B3, is 45 except in midtown area bounded by Stewart Highway, Tudor Road, and that's pursuant to an administrative amendment.
Let me just clarify one thing. Did you all already recommend to do away with the other commercial zoning districts in the use table in Chapter 5?
In Chapter 4.
Whatever, you know, I mean...
We have B1A, we have B3, we added B1B, and the mixed zones of community and neighborhood, yes.
I just, I mean, I think the, you know, this is from my time prior, but I know that the way in which to sort of blend commercial development outside more intensive commercial areas was through the use of some of those other zoning districts. If you take that away, and you're just back to B3, you know, just practically speaking, I don't really know where you are, other than saying B3 here is going to be different than B3 there. You almost can't restrict B3 because you wouldn't be able to do anything else.
Well, what's proposed is the mixed use, there'd be mixed-use standards in the various insertment of the zones, and then there would be some restrictions under those mixed-use standards. So instead of creating a separate zoning district that's mixed-use, those standards are moved into some of the existing zoning districts so that there can be mixed use, but it's within an existing district, but it's subject to those same standards. So standards got carried over. Am I explaining that right?
So you can do mixed use in those districts.
And there are some limitations.
Well, B3, I mean, you can today. But I mean, but is B3 in midtown different than B3 in anywhere else in town? In kind of where you left after you get rid of the other zoning districts?
No.
Then, I mean, my point is, is the practical, I don't necessarily agree with a policy decision, but if it's already gone that direction, you can't do anything but allow unlimited in the B3 because you've gotten rid of the other alternatives.
Yes.
So I don't, I mean, I don't know that there's, you know, if you already had that discussion, it's water under the bridge at this point, unless you want to go back and have that discussion and rethink the other zoning districts and sort of where they would be located.
Where we are in a work session, in this work session or in past work sessions, is we're having discussions. And then based upon those discussions, Sally is preparing a series of amendments for us to deliberate and vote on in our regular meeting. And that's, and those are valid points that you've brought up, and we can, and I'm sure we will be voting because this is an important issue.
The department strongly objects to limiting height limits. We support moving forward with the height limits outside of midtown and the administration's amendment, amendments to allow unlimited building heights in midtown and allow the regional mixed-use district with unlimited heights as a rezoning option in midtown. To remove the districts that could have provided for development in scale with the neighborhoods, and to eliminate that difference between the major city centers and the outlying neighborhoods, we strongly advise we'll repeat or contradict implementation of the comprehensive plan. And that's available for you in the...
Yes. And thank you, and as you all know, there are several of us that have a different opinion about all that, but ultimately, it'll be...
It's in bus.
Left up to the assembly to make that determination. Thank you. Okay, Sally.
The next issue I had was, if anyone wanted to discuss, I guess it had been brought up to me in the past, and I'd put it on several of the past agendas, and we never discussed it, and that is the height transition for neighborhood compatibility. The issue is in pages 19 and 20 of some of the coffee materials require some sunlight access in residential properties within 200 feet. There's some restrictions to allow light.
Can we get some testimony about the problem with lighting, that they're getting their lighting restricted on some condition of use or something?
It was like by fireweed.
By fireweed. We had testimony that people were concerned about that loss of sunlight or something. Is that what this...
Don, you probably know, you're probably familiar with this, with this...
Yeah.
Part of the provisionally adopted chapters. Could you speak to us from an architectural point of view?
Well, to some degree. The issue is that, and I don't know the specifics in the book, but the bottom line is that they want to prevent a building being built that would cast a shadow on a certain property across the street, for instance, and that during certain days of the year, certain times of the day, there has to be a certain amount, you have to have a certain number of hours of sunlight on that property, which I guess, you know, it sounds great, but it's like somebody buying a piece of property, and the guy down the hill can't cut his trees down. It's the same sort of deal. If you wanted to prevent, if you wanted to prevent people from casting a shadow on you, you should buy the property. And so that's one of the reasons they wanted to limit the height limits in B3 in midtown. And that was a lot of testimony at the public hearing, was they said, "We don't want any more tall buildings because you'll block our sun." Well, on a winter day in Anchorage, the sun comes in about 5 degrees above the horizon, and a building of a one-story is going to cast a shadow 100 feet long. So a 200-foot distance, a one-story house is going to cut off the sunlight 200 feet away. And then also in the tables, they have the sun shining at times of the year that the table didn't even match the actual sun angles in the, in the book. So anyway, it's strictly one of those things where, does a person have the right to sunlight if the guy across the street builds a building? And so that's the policy. And, you know, I mean, I guess it's free market or not, you know, does government control, you know, whether you can cast a shadow on somebody else's property?
Dan, are you familiar with this part? And could you speak to it? Because it's beyond my technical expertise. I, you know...
Well, the, I know what Dan Coffee was proposing was 300 foot for non-residential use, is adjacent to residential, and 200 feet for, in the R4, step back, and cover, you know, have your step backs going out, limiting the height adjacent residential on the south side only. So that's not as far as I get.
That's pretty significant.
You could condemn an entire parcel of land doing that.
Yeah.
And this thing is also, does not specify the date in the year as to when you'd actually determine this plane. And if it's summer, it's one answer. If it's winter, it's an entirely different answer. And as it's specified right now, you do not know if it's one or the other, and you wouldn't know which point to pick for your sun angle.
May I explain this section?
Sure, briefly.
I'm an expert.
Yeah, thanks.
The provisionally adopted height transition is in a solar access center, so it isn't designed to guarantee sunlight access on in winter. It's a bulk height privacy buffering transition between a low-density residential lot and a higher-density lot. And it is carefully calibrated to avoid impacting the development capacity on the commercial side. Its primary function is to address the placement of the building on the commercial side relative to the residential. I think there are great examples for you are available in Exhibit A, and they clearly demonstrate that even on a, let's say, the worst-case scenario for the commercial property owner is you have a very shallow lot next to the residential, and maybe an alley, and then you're third, the residential. That even on those shallow lots, the height transition provides for more than enough development capacity and building bulk than what we see in Anchorage. And if we calibrated it to do that, to avoid impacting potential density or capacity, you know, in all practical sense we imagine here in Anchorage. And the reason that we did provide it is multiple objectives. Yes, it will provide more sunlight for more, extend more into the spring and fall. It will also provide for visual buffering between, you know, very big building and your house, and for privacy, and just generally ambient daylight. So there's a number of reasons besides the South for providing this. And it's, I think there's some good examples around town where it would, it basically protects the residential property owner from the worst-case scenario while still guaranteeing developed rights on the commercial side. And I encourage you to look at this response memo, and it'll refer you back to those visual illustrated examples of actual sites in Anchorage, and it shows that it's just protecting...
Could you just tell us a couple of those examples? Because I'm trying to figure out where there's B3, then an alley, and then residential. So do you have an example?
Yeah, so there are two examples that we identify, the first of which is the Cook-Inlet Housing mixed-use building on Mountain P Drive. And we just chose it not for its development type, but for just its, it's an example of a multi-story mixed-use building that's on a shallow lot, but, you know, pretend it's an office building on that same shallow lot. This is Exhibit A, and you have this. But basically, we ran some visual tests, technical tests, and this development actually had to get a variance to develop at even this intensity under current code. And what our test showed was that you could actually, this is a three-story building, that you could actually get five or six stories out of this and still meet the daylight plane. But the point of it is that the daylight plane encourages shifting the building mass away from that residential lot. Now, here's another scenario. It's the Warren Zoff condominium tower on the corner of Spinard and Fireweed. Again, even that building would get by. And it is probably about 70 feet away from the residential, maybe more, but under the current code and provisionally adopted code without its transition, this building could shove up to within 20 feet of the residential. So there's a third example that is, actually, it's right over here, it's two-story, that we've illustrated here. And I talked to the owner of the apartment on this side, and he didn't know who I was or what I was doing, and I just told him we were again zoning ordinance, and he's mowing his lawn, and he looked depressed, and he said, "You know, I just can't believe they allow people, the city allows people to develop something this tall that close, and you go out there, and it's jarring." This wouldn't take away the ability to build this building. It would require it to move back on its lot, maybe 15 feet, or maybe take the top story off if they want to keep it that close.
And they might not make it a feasible project.
Well, I think that the examples here show that at any kind of development scenario, we imagine seeing very common in Anchorage this feature in the next 30 years, that there's more than enough development capacity left over, but this is just a basic protection for the residences.
Development capacity... Development capacity for...
The commercial lot. In terms of floor area, the building height, it doesn't require the building to step back or become smaller.
So we had, as a city, we paid for a commercial land inventory study, and it looked at how much land, and it made assumptions about how dense the development would be on certain lots and commercial areas, and it said that we were short of commercial land. And here, well-calibrated, it developed models to look at the volume of square footage or volume of commercial space, and as to how that matches our needs going into the future for commercial land.
Yes, for example, Warrenzoff Tower would be difficult to, impossible to build under current code for other reasons besides, but actually, the rewrite will make buildings like that, and office buildings, the two types of development that are likely to get you the height, right? But the rewrite will actually make these buildings more possible on a small site, because Warrenzoff becomes possible again under the rewrite in terms of its height and density. And it's becoming more likely, like you say, with the market trending towards, we need more efficient use of land. And so this height transition merely states, the building should, on its lot, shift further away from the residential. And without looking at reducing size of the floor area, and you'll even see under that section, there are exceptions, you know, in the event, for whatever reason, it's a strange lot or something, that there is an impact, or would be an impact, there's ways to get the exemption or the exception. And so its purpose is simply to implement the comprehensive plan without impacting density.
So Tom, it sounds like you guys put a lot of thought, a lot of investigation into it.
All right, so...
Do we have, do we want this provision? Do we not want this provision?
I think we're going to have to debate it. We're going to have to vote.
So is the issue just whether it's completely deleted or it stays? That's the amendment proposed? It's deletion? Is that what it is?
Yes, I think that's, I think that's it.
Can I just, are you, is there like a list of amendments that you've discussed that are likely going to be proposed on the floor? Is that...
Well, yes, and what you need to do, and what I've asked each one of the commissioners to do, is to have a private meeting with Sally and to sort of get brought up to speed. And so if you could schedule that with Sally, so that she has an opportunity to introduce you to all the material.
Okay.
Okay, it's probably, it'll take you about 45 minutes.
But in other words, there's sort of a scorecard that everyone, as the meeting rolls, will be moving through that, through that list.
We did that, we did that at Monday night. There was proposed amendments that were then deliberated and voted on for three of the chapters.
And while we're on that, before we run out of time, for this coming Monday, I know this is ambitious, but I'm thinking we should try to do 3, 4, 7, and 8. I don't think we will get through 7. Jim wants to be present when 7 is done on the commercial side, but we could start on the residential side. Does that sound...
I've got it.
I mean, I think by the end of tomorrow, I will have all of those amendment charts and all of the same things that you had for Monday's meeting, I will have that same thing for...
Packet for all those chapters.
Same packet. And should we discuss who wants to take, like, lead?
No, we'll do that at another time. Did you have a question?
Yes. Could the public have access to those documents before the meeting on Monday, so that we know what you're discussing?
I'll have to ask Legal that question, and then, because it's not a matter of public until we actually have our meeting, everyone is invited to, of course, attend the work sessions, so I'll have to ask that as we lay that question. And if you could give Sally your name and contact information, we'll be back in touch with you.
And the other thing is, I don't, I don't know that we could provide it, just because it's so expensive. It's, I mean, chapter 7, the materials, I like this thick. I thought it was just a standard thing that was done before public meetings. No, this is, what we have is a chart of all of the proposed amendments, and then we have another chart of the commission's recommendations on the administration amendments and the prior 2010 planning and zoning commission amendments. And then we actually have a red line and a blue line draft of the code showing those amendments. So for chapter 7, just to give you an idea, because that's why I was working on, it's literally about this thick, because the chapter itself is, what, 100-some pages? There's 24 pages in the chart of amendments, and there's... Are they online?
No. As Dennis Wheeler explained to me in a meeting that Terry Parks and I had with him on Monday, this is legislative casework as opposed to, this is legislative work as opposed to casework. And what you're referring to is, yes, all of the staff recommendations and comments and everything for our individual cases is always published automatically. But this, as Dennis explained to me, is a little bit different. But we'll check with him.
This is really...
Yeah, this is part of our...
I've got a 10-second deal on that, because you guys had a great discussion Monday night, and that's got to do with the authority under your, versus, I think, what we get in South Harriers, three years, I follow, to multiple commissioning, the city transitive to that boring project like Alias for the board, for instance, and as multiple commission boards go to, to dedicate one committee, like the commission, that's looking at all aspects of the project. It seems to me that there are better, if you look at the weight of variance as components of an overall project than going over here to the zoning boards, who doesn't know anything about it, hasn't seen the content, hasn't heard the neighbors' comments, and everything else, just to make judging. So I would absolutely support what Bruce was going on.
There were just another part of that. Did that get right?
Yeah.
I don't know how we get there. I don't know how we get there.
I don't know how to get there either. Okay.
So it wasn't reconsidered?
Huh? I didn't reconsider it.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.